Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 regular meeting of the Stoughton School Committee. This meeting is being recorded by SMAC for future broadcasting. Please rise if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
It's on that side?
Oh, it is, yes. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item on our agenda is public comment. And do we have anybody signed up? Okay. Having no one signed up, we are going to move straight into superintendent update. Dr. Baieda?
Thank you. Thank you all. Madam Chair, thank you. I want to just send an extension of thank you to those who supported the building project, especially for our volunteers who did the work. Informationally, the Renew America Grant for Renewable Facilities has been filed. As you know, it's a multimillion dollar grant. I want to thank all of those that have been involved, especially our colleagues on the town side. Stoughton High School graduated 270 students on the 6th of June. Great call by Principal Miller on having it outside. I'm going to give her all the kudos because if it had rained, it would have been her fault. On the 11th, we graduated from Stoughton Academy, 17 students, always a really good time, and the stories were fantastic. And I want to thank all of the faculty of Stoughton High School and Stoughton Academy and the staff and administrators for a wonderful two weeks of celebration. Stoughton High School has been approved to start a National English Honor Society chapter for this coming school year, and that's thanks to student leadership. The Department of Elementary-Secondary Education has restarted to collect educator attendance by attendance rate percentage, average number of absences, and absence 10 or more days as a percentage for staff. The data will be in aggregate, and it will be public. So that's starting back up. They stopped doing that during COVID. They had just started it before that. I'm going to be working with food services on a comprehensive review of what we serve with input from our students in grade six to 12, as well as families. This will be a major project for 2425. I know at least two of you have spoken to me about it, and I've gotten enough input that I think it's time for us to review it. I'll be informing the administration and families and the Hockamock League in relation to my expectations of student athlete participation when it's aligned to mandated testing, i.e. AP testing. This is an issue that's come up a number of times. You'll be getting a memo from me as a committee. I've decided to reserve to put that off until the start of the school year because nobody's going to read my memo right now, to be quite honest. So I think it's important to do it then. But I'm also sending it to the Hockamock League on how do we? And I've been doing some research, and to be quite honest, the general research is that kids are coming from two different places after the AP test, regardless if they need extended time or not. They're exhausted, and in some cases, it's too much. And in some cases, it's like, wow, I can't wait to get to field. So we have to find that balance. But in this particular case, it had to do with students having to make difficult choices around attending a game versus completing their assessment. And this is a no-brainer for me. So I'll make sure that the committee is involved with that as well. I do want to inform the committee formally that we talked about redistricting the district. This will be on the table in September, regardless of the current vote or future votes. We don't have a choice. As you know, from enrollment in kindergarten right now, we have at least two schools that are going to be looking at libraries becoming kindergarten classrooms next year because there's no other place to go. So we have some issues to address. I started the safety consultant review. As you know, we got funding $20,000 from Town Meeting for a safety review. I met with our first consultant today that I'm considering. They'll have a plan that looks at the environment, the physical plant, the cyber, and then our crisis and how we respond to all of that. So you'll be involved in that, more so in executive session than in the public session. And lastly, I want to thank the entire SPS team of educators, and by educators, I mean anyone who works within a school building or drives our kids to school, feeds them, cleans our school, works with them one-to-one small group, supports them as an administrator or as their master classroom teacher, and you, the school committee, for supporting me during this first year of transition. Although it's not my first year as a superintendent, it's been eye-opening, it's been a challenge, and I've loved every minute of it. Good days and bad. So thank you to you, the committee, and to the general public for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baieda. Does anyone have any questions or comments for the superintendent?
I appreciate the update. Appreciate you following up on the Hockamock League issue and also happy for a state of summer vacation. [Laughter]
Not yet. Tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow. Sorry. We have to deal with the room.
Any other comments or questions? All right, on to new business. And we have quite a bit, but hopefully it should go fairly quickly. The first item is the fruition scholar donation from the Motley family. We have a letter from the Stoughton High School Principal, Ms. Miller, about a donation for the fruition scholars from Mrs. Angela Motley, a parent who served as a fruition scholar advisor and who is a long-term Stoughton community member. She's donated $1,000 to this program. For those who don't know, the fruition scholars program pairs seniors with underclassmen, and the goal is to mentor diverse students and encourage them to pursue honors and AP courses. Do we have any questions or comments about this donation? Can I have a motion to accept the fruition scholars donation from Mrs. Motley?
I move to accept the fruition scholars donation from Mrs. Angela Motley with grateful school committee. We're grateful.
With gratitude. All right, so the motion was made by Ms. Shannon. Is it second?
Second.
Oh, second by Mr. Barbosa. Yes, gratitude. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So this motion is carried 5-0. Thank you very much to Mrs. Motley for her support of fruition scholars. We really appreciate your continued support of this program. The next item is the Student Council Alumni Scholarship Acceptance. We have a letter from Stoughton High School Principal, Ms. Miller, about a new scholarship, the Student Council Alumni Scholarship established by the class of 2024 as their class gift. This $500 scholarship will be awarded to a student who has been involved in student council or served as a class officer or class representative. Any questions or comments about this scholarship? Yes?
I'd just like to express my appreciation to the class of 2024. It is unusual to have an exception for those who are not necessarily enrolling in higher ed institutions to be eligible for a grant or scholarship, and I really love that they made this truly inclusive.
That's an excellent point. This is a great opportunity for students who need that support to start a military career or pursue a business opportunity or something like that. It's fantastic to have that option as well. Any other questions or comments? Can I have a motion to accept the Student Council Alumni Scholarship established by the class of 2024?
So moved.
All right, that motion was made by Ms. Kreckler. A second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Shannon. Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the motion is carried 5-0. Thank you very much to the Student Council and class officers of the class of 2024 for this very thoughtful class gift. Really appreciate you supporting your future, your fellow students. The next item on the agenda, I'll have to take back because, sorry, this was something we discussed in executive session, so I need to redig out my materials. This is the Joint Labor Management Committee Recommendation Approval for the Jones Early Childhood Center Schedule. And right now, we're talking about the MOA specifically. Dr. Baieda, can you present what exactly we're looking at for this?
Yeah, so the basic change that we have is in addition to the Jones Early Childhood Center where we're providing actually potentially more services, as you know from a vote that you took recently on new fees and so on and so forth. And what this does is it adjusts in some ways the following. We have currently a five full day, only eight PS spots. We have a lack of participation, so that's a concern, and the rationale for moving from that and adjust it to the four full day model. We have one classroom for four full days, which will remain the same schedule. The one classroom half day Monday, Wednesday, and once classroom half day Tuesday, Thursday, once adjusted to the full day schedule. So again, that's a minor change. The two classrooms, half days, Monday through Thursday, remain as half days, but except we'll go to a Monday through Friday schedule, so that's a benefit. One classroom half day AM only on Monday through Thursday remains a half day classroom, but adding a PM section as well as Friday, which goes with the prior comment. And then the grow classroom and the community classrooms, there are no changes to them at all. Then, the school year for these students would change as well by having the preschool starting the Monday after Labor Day, which gives the staff two more days in terms of service delivery. And then it will end for students five days prior to the last day of school. So the calendar that you'll vote later has a date, but those dates will change based on any snow days that could take place, and we actually made a notation of that. And the reason for that is, to be quite honest, we want to be more efficient and do a better job in the transitioning that takes place between pre-K and K in terms of the following fiscal year. And there's no added cost to this agreement either.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments about this MOA?
I have a question.
Yes.
I think something that was just really helpful for me in understanding this is that this proposal actually removes an option that we struggled to fill with the amendment and replaces it with an option that was-
Were asked for.
That was higher demand. This is in response to like family demand and feedback. And also, I think the point about this now being five days at the end of the school year that's set aside for testing, for managing the transition to kindergarten is an increase, but it is an increase over two days. That is, the school day is shorter now for preschool, so it is a little bit shorter with this change, but there's precedent for that essentially. Yeah, and I also, I think one thing I just want to say publicly too is I appreciate that our administrators are doing some data collection around these schedule changes. So as we try out a school year, whether it's the preschool schedule or the middle school schedule or the high school schedule, I think we'll be looking for updates about how it's going and what we can do better, what we can adjust next time this comes up for discussion. So just those were all helpful points for me, so I wanted to share them and make sure everybody had them.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? I know that I did hear from some families that they were upset about the loss of the five full days. However, I do think this does give some more flexibility. This MOA doesn't prevent us from revisiting this, and especially because we are going to renegotiate in a couple of years, we can certainly revisit that. I know that doesn't help when your child is going to outage this program next year, but you know, certainly the flexibility to be able to do the transition into kindergarten, I think, is the big part for me and the most beneficial of this because that is huge, having that ability to sit down with the kindergarten teachers before September and really explain what services students need, what classroom activities and practices best serve students, I think, is going to be huge in helping our kindergarteners make that transition. All right, if there are no other questions or comments, can I have a motion to approve the MOA between the school committee and the STA for the Jones Early Childhood Center Schedule?
So moved.
All right, that was made by Ms. Shannon. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Barbosa. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the motion is carried 5-0. I'm going to sign this right now before I forget. Sorry for the business, only because tomorrow's a holiday, so I can't come in and do it. All right, so there's that. And related to that, since we voted this change, that does affect the start and the end time of the calendar. We are revisiting the school calendar. This is the 2025 updated school calendar approval, and I want to note that the only changes that this has on it is the start date for the preschool moves from Thursday, September 5th to Monday, September 9th, and the ending date moves from Tuesday, June 17th to Tuesday, June 10th, unless it needs to be adjusted due to snow days or other school cancellations. I also want to note that because Town Mayor voted to change the designation of the second Tuesday in October to Indigenous Peoples' Day, we're going to take this opportunity and go ahead and update the name of that holiday. October 14th was already designated as a no-school day. As a school holiday previously, it continues to be a no-school day. It's just a change in the name. So those are the only changes to this. I know a lot of you have already set this calendar in your calendars and made your vacation plans and major time off work plans, so those are the only changes, are the preschool and the change of that name for October 14th. Any questions or comments about the school calendar change?
I just want to move that we need to approve the amended school calendar that reflects the new preschool schedule and Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Second.
So the motion is made by Ms. Kreckler and seconded by Ms. Shannon. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the motion's carried 5-0. And a quick tip, if you haven't saved this calendar already, save it in your phone under your favorites, or one of the tricks that one of my friends taught me was to use this as the contact profile image for your kid's school so that you can find it. You scroll down and find it. When that number pops up and calls you, you can remind yourself that, oh yeah, it's early release day next Tuesday or next Thursday. So helpful tip. Anyway, moving on. Yes. The next item on the agenda is the STA Unit B MOA approval specifically regarding the Director of Secondary School Counseling moving from Unit A to Unit B. And Dr. Baieda, can you present this?
Madam Chair, agree to the committee. So basically, what this does is this takes a 182-day employee and moves this to a 12-month Unit B employee with supervisory evaluative responsibilities in grade six to 12. The total cost for that change is $5,600. So we're going from a Unit B position that has the stipend longevity, five additional work days, summer work, plus the salary, to the same idea on the other side, except now we have supervision evaluation and all of those responsibilities. And that includes the back-to-school nights at six to eight, the nights of excellence, the parent conferences, all in six to eight, the graduation that takes place, then the high school time period remains the same, but we do add eight more hours to the person's responsibility with six to eight responsibilities. So those are the major determining factors, and the person now has 17 staff members that they supervise, observe, and evaluate. So for the change that we're making, it's worth while because of literally the supervision. And as you know, a targeted area that the administration has had in not only showcasing our counseling programming and all the things that we're doing, but also enhancing it at the next level.
Thank you. Questions or comments on this proposal?
Yeah, I think this makes a lot of sense, both fiscally and then also it just allows for additional energy resources, literal time, days on the calendar for counseling responsibilities. But I think the supervisory piece is huge because it allows for a little bit more bandwidth there to just like help our counseling staff sharpen their practice in service of students, so I think that that's exciting. Dr. Baieda, can you just speak really quickly to the cost of this? So I think it was about, so about $5,600 total.
Yeah, it's $5,000. Yeah, so the difference between the current 182 days and-
My, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. The current 182 days salary and the move to Unit B salary is a total of $5,639. So you're moving to a 12-month position for my 182 plus the five additional days plus some summer work, but now you have somebody at 12 months under the Unit B with the same vacation and all that stuff. But now you're not paying someone a per diem to come in in the summer and all of that. The one other change is the stipend that is in Unit A that was part of that, which is that testing coordinator position is around $2,000. That's part of the $5,639 increase to the base of literally having supervision evaluation and observations taking place.
Thank you.
You bet.
Dr. Baieda, can you clarify what the 1ML counselor is and why there's a question mark after that?
That is the Multi-Language Learner Counselor. And so that's always one of those areas in that field where the director of multilingual education or multilanguage learners and that position will probably have to have some consensus on who will be the direct evaluator because the role is so dynamic to the second language translations and supports. You bet.
Any other questions or comments? And so revisiting the question that we've talked about, this person is reporting to the building principals, correct, and to-
Through Mr. Ford under curriculum instruction and as well as the day-to-day building principals, which will be two building principals. It'll be both, and we have this with other staff, by the way, throughout the district that work at both the middle school and high school that are in Unit A. It's just this is different in Unit B. And part of the reason is when they were under Unit A, they can't evaluate Unit A members. So this is one of the major reasons for the change.
Thank you. All right, if there are no other questions, can I have a motion to approve, what are we calling this, the, is it the MOA?
I would say to approve the Unit B 12-month direct of secondary school counseling position from Unit A.
Okay. All right, thank you. The motion was made by Ms. Kreckler. Yes, is there a second?
Second.
All right, seconded by Ms. Shannon. Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that motion's carried 5-0. I need to sign this, but I finished scribbling on my copies. If you give a clean copy, I will sign that. Actually, I'll do that now. That's what happens when your chair gets distracted. All right, that business is taken care of. All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the handbook vote. Now, I do want to note that if we do have revisions or things to consider, that we don't have to vote tonight, but we will need to revisit these at the July meeting because they do need to be done by the start of the school year. I want to start with the middle school. We have here, the additions that were proposed are outlined in yellow, and I open it up to the committee if you have any comments, questions. Unfortunately, Ms. Crowley and Ms. Miller were not able to be here tonight, but we can certainly have questions recorded and brought to them if we need to have further questions answered. And of course, we have Dr. Baieda and Mr. Ford here to answer questions as well. So, Shannon?
I had a question about the middle school handbook. The section under communication, which I believe is repeated later on in the handbook, the section of the start system, if an issue is reported during school, the following procedures are followed. There's a list, and on the third list, if there is a concern that an incident results in a potential injury, the school nurse assesses student. I need clarification on that because I'm having a hard time following that sentence, specifically deciding where, because it doesn't say that the incident is an injury-based incident where the others imply it's a classroom or, I guess, an academic-based issue versus, you know, external behavioral-based issue. So I'm just, because there's the global, the issue, I'm confused as to why a teacher will address it, an administrator will address it, but the third one, the school nurse will assess for injury but not necessarily address the, it's just confusing to me.
All right, so the way this is broken down was to make sure that when there's a classroom concern, not a physical concern per se, not an injury, but a student acting out in class, and instead of a student just being kicked out of class, for example, the process would be that the teacher is the first role of communication with the families. In the second one, that issue's being kicked out potentially, A, from teacher to administration, or-
Sorry. Or is considered a report that's been received by administration, then it's no longer apparent communication from the teacher. It's now an administrator responsibility to the parent. And then the third one is a medical, and that probably should be, we should probably be using words like medical and not injury. And it could be, so I see where you're coming with that. Let me-
Yeah, it makes it sound like there's a fight in the classroom, and then the school nurse is going to be called in to assess an injury, but then the school nurse is the one who's communicating the fight issue to the, like I said, it's just a little, it could be clarified.
Yeah, I think that this would be, because it's the school nurse, it has to be noted as medical. So regardless if it's, it could be an injury, it could also be that somebody has fainted.
Yeah.
There's no injury. So it's a medical condition, a medical, I don't want to use the word issue, but we can definitely change that one to use the word medical.
I think that would be helpful and clear to parents who might be referring to this as a resource.
Okay. We'll rewrite that.
Any others? I know that you have some. I know you're ready to go, so I'll let you.
Yeah, I might have a few things here, but I did want to revisit the backpacks because I know that that is something that the students liked, was that during COVID, they were able to have their backpacks in the class. I think Ms. Crowley might have mentioned an issue with cell phones being the reason to not have backpacks. Maybe there was some more, and I didn't necessarily hear that, but if it's possible to be able to have backpacks in class, I think the children would prefer it. If not, even just, I know in some stadiums, they allow clear bags, so maybe there's a happy medium in there somewhere where the kids can, because it's a difficult, it's difficult to get from one side of the school to the other side of the school when you only have a certain amount of time. If you need to stop somewhere and talk to a teacher, if you need to stop and use the restrooms, to have your books with you, oftentimes there's missing, oh, I left it in the locker, now you can't go and get it. So I would prefer to not have that added back in to the handbook.
I just have a follow-up question. Do we have any say in the handbooks, or is that purely an administrator, the building principal?
So the way, we have a policy that governs approval of handbooks. So the school committee has the capacity to approve anything in the handbooks that falls under a school committee policy. So if there's a component in the handbook that isn't related to a school committee policy, it goes back to site-based management. So that's the school council, the principal in conjunction with the school council. If there's a component in the handbook that falls under a school committee policy, the best being dress code, I mean, the thing that we talk about most often, if there was a change here, it would be subject to your approval as it's a subset of one of your policies.
So are backpacks covered under that? Because my question is, are we making a recommendation, or are we, do we have any say in editing how that?
It would come down to whether you consider the backpack component an extension of the dress code.
Okay.
So a couple of different things here that's important. Remember, we, two of the issues that have been brought up, global safety issue, we'll leave it at that. Second is our classroom physical sizes at OMS are not appropriate. They're smaller than they're supposed to be based on the size of the building. So what happens is we end up with backpacks located at the back of classrooms. And I know that that's been an issue that's been brought up, and then they become a problem. So that's been part of the issue. You can decide that this is an extension and say we would prefer, by the way, the third one is the hallways. They're just too narrow, the way the hallways are made, and it's an issue. We can do what, if you think it's an extension of the dress code, then you can go that route. If you want to make a recommendation, then I'll sit down with the administration and say, is there other opportunities here besides having no backpacks? We can go whatever route you'd like to go.
Okay.
I'd like to-
Well, we said, I could have a little bit of discussion. Mr. Barbosa, do you want to add something to that?
I'd like to suggest then a little bit of discussion with the previous principal of the school to get an idea of why it was allowed and why it was taken out and so on. They might be able to get some value from that information.
Yeah, and I have no problem doing that with Mr. C. and asking him, you know, from his 10-year history there. I will tell you, most of this comes out, many school systems are going to this process because of so many things in the world that we can't control. It is what it is. We all know that. You know, we are a district that strives on safety every day, and this is just another way to do that. But I'm happy to, we have it till the July meeting to make a determination to see if we feel such.
Yeah, I agree with that. It sounds like a good approach. Particular concern with the size of the lockers and how long it takes someone to take the things out of the lockers and put it in. I know at one time, the hallways were one-way at the school to avoid- Particular concern with the size of the lockers and how long it takes someone to take the things out of the lockers and put it in. I know at one time, the hallways were one-way at the school to avoid traffic, but I can just imagine everyone crunching over to unpack their lockers, their backpacks, put in lockers or vice versa at the beginning of the day, at the end of the day. And of course, if they have to go back to the locker to pick something up, it just may cause a bit more, it may cause more safety hazard in the hallway than it resolves. That's what I'm concerned with.
Okay. I'll make sure that those types of questions will go back to the administration and prior administration to give you some more feedback.
And do you have any other questions or comments about the middle school handbook? Do you mind if I, do you want to? Okay.
Sorry. Before we lay the backpacks to rest, I think, just to throw another option out there, I think I heard Ms. Crowley present a lot of rationale around safety and like some of the concerns there at the last meeting. I'd be curious about what it would look like to roll this out for a year and then revisit with next year's handbook and see maybe a pack would be an option, like use the recommendation in the handbook with no backpacks, see how it goes, see how we're measuring like safety occurrence of incidents. And then-
Wouldn't the discussion with the prior principal help that because they've had it?
Yeah. No, I'm not saying that as an alternative.
So we don't have to go through a trial? Just that discussion? What do you think?
Yeah. I think we can potentially do vote.
We can also, we can also-
Step on, step to.
We can also bring the administration back for further questions. Through you, Madam Chair, we could have the committee ask some of those questions to you and then have them shared with the current principal and some experienced folks from OMS. Maybe even we can get a couple of the school council members on why they supported this. Because remember, the school council is supposed to be the governing body, if you will, that's giving you recommendations in the areas where you should be voting, but in other areas, they're saying this is what we want for the school. So I would use that process of the school council as well.
Okay. I know that Ms. Powers has a few more comments, but I do want to reiterate, it looks like this one is certainly we're going to revisit. So I am happy to collect more comments and questions. Certainly, I want to, if you have some more you want to bring forward right now, and then we can have that, send that out to the administration team and the student of the school council or, and/or invite them back to a July meeting to answer those questions for you. So if you want to go ahead and send that to me by the end of the month, we can certainly, I'll collect them and forward that to everybody. So, but I think you have another one?
No, I think that's probably will work.
Okay.
You can, that's also, I apologize, Madam Chair, through you to Ms. Powers. That's also the opportunity on the prior discussion on issues related to policing and so on and so forth that could be provided to the school council, have they looked at this. I think it's important to utilize the school council on matters that are not in, quote, "the voting of the school committee." Of course, I think you have a right to your say, but I think the school council should be a Neger partner because it is parents, it is teachers that are involved in that process.
If you have any other questions or comments about this OMS, so OMS will revisit, so that one's been, we'll table that one for the moment, where we visit this in July. I do want to take some time and look at the high school specifically and see if, were there were comments or questions about this particular handbook. Again, Ms. Miller wasn't able to be here, but perhaps we can get some questions answered tonight, or again, we can do the same process. So if people would like to take a minute and-
I don't have anything else. Overall, I want to thank both Ms. Crowley and Ms. Miller for the way they laid out the changes because it was really easy to follow and I just really appreciate that. Like, I don't have questions. That's awesome.
Yes. It was nice to not have to read the whole, like, 104-page document to find the, like, two-word change on page two. Ms. Shannon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On page 32, top of the page where it says "tardy to school," I just wanted to get some clarification in terms of what counts toward the offenses. Is it solely tardiness to the school building or is it tardies to class that would count as, you know, I'm thinking like eighth offense, 10th offense, because I'm thinking if you, I could see several offenses happening and, you know, so is it per day? Is it per class? Is it tardy to the school? Would just like some clarifying language there, once again, to make the policy a little easier for parents to follow.
This particular policy is tardy to school. So this would not be getting to class five minutes later, three minutes late. That's an issue the teacher would deal with the student directly.
Can we just clarify that? Like each semester, tardies to school will be dealt with as follows, and just insert those two words for clarity. I know it's the heading, but once again, it'll just help avoid misinterpretation.
So tardy to school within the body of the statute?
Yes.
The lawyers out there would agree.
Ms. Powers?
So on page 27, it talks about COVID-related categories and the change case about false accusations. And I'm not sure how they're going to decide what has been falsely accused, but I can see some problems with students who would be afraid to come forward with certain accusations if they were afraid that they couldn't be proven and that it could potentially come back and say, well, now you falsely accused me of something. So specifically, sexual assault is very difficult to prove, and I would hate to have any student feel, male or female, feel that they couldn't say something upfront for fear of retribution or a punishment for saying something. So that, number one, I kind of have issue with.
So this wouldn't be a situation where a student made an allegation and it couldn't be proved. This would actually be something where there was an investigation conducted and the principal or designated could prove that it was in fact a false allegation. So this wouldn't be, you know, somebody says something and it's not substantiated and they're in trouble. This would be where there's actually an investigation conducted and you can demonstrably make a determination that it was in fact a false allegation, potentially with a specific intent. And going back to the example they used, which like an allegation of sexual misconduct, that actually would fall beyond this code of conduct and most likely fall into Title IX, which is incredibly prescriptive, which has its own process to make a determination and what the hearing officer has to work with and even how they conduct the investigation. So like more, much more serious things like you're talking about actually would be pulled out of this and it would have its own process.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Ross? No. Do we feel confident voting on this one tonight? Is this one that you want to have more information specifically around that?
Yeah. I wouldn't mind if we had a little bit more time-
Okay.
-to go over some of the things in here. Get back to you by a time certain with questions, comments, that we can have Ms. Miller and Ms. Crowley come back and say, yeah, we can make some adjustments. I think that would be beneficial.
Is anyone, everyone okay with that one? Again, if you have questions or comments specifically that you want addressed, we have the amendment that we have proposed to add the tardy to school. Why don't you give that to me by the end of the month, to the 28th or so, and then I will collect that and send that on to Dr. Beta.
The 28th?
28th, yes. Just before everybody gets off into July 1st holiday, July 4th holiday. All right. So we will revisit those in July with the intention of approving them or having them available for the start of school. The next item on the agenda is the Select Energy Solar On-Bill Credit Purchase and Sale Agreement. And this, Dr. Beta, would you like to present this? Because this is, you had to explain this to me.
Yeah. So this is something that's happening in the renewable solar energy field with public entities more, over and over again. I've had probably four of these in my career in the last six or seven years. And what it is, is when these companies come into communities, they basically want to be good neighbors, if you will. I'll just use that phrase. And so they tie in contracts that basically provide funding for the purposes of electricity, in this case, that is provided directly to, in most cases, a public entity. So I've seen senior housing, I've seen schools, I've seen fire station, police station, and a sports complex, actually. So, and what happens is they have to utilize their good faith agreement to say, I'm putting the money towards X meter. So in this particular case, it would go to a national grid meter, add cost to us, and it takes the cost off. So it would be a $10,000 donation per year to pay the national grid meter. In this particular case, we're choosing Stoughton High School. It's the most logical. So the 20 years of savings comes to about $200,000 of that meter that they'll be paying for. There's no obligation to us whatsoever. There's no, we don't have to fix anything, we're not responsible for fixing anything. It's literally, the best example I have in town of it, and it's just because of my old days, is there was a situation up on the corner of, and I was actually mentioned at town meeting, of how do we agree to have a warehouse put into a street without getting that company to pay for sidewalks? With solar energy, what they're doing is they're recognizing that they're making a ton of money and offsetting costs, so they create good neighborhood agreements. And like I said, it's almost all of it with companies goes to some type of a public entity. I've seen it go towards, like I said, those topics I said earlier with police and fire, and I actually think there was one in the library, if I remember correctly. And, oh, and to the town, not Stoughton, but where I was, we had a $20,000 donation that went to the town for the purposes of a startup of a playground. So they, it's all about where they're physically located and how they can give back to the community. And they choose. And then you're either, if it's not Stoughton Public Schools, then they'll go somewhere else. So I recommend that you accept it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about this?
So just, this is free money.
It's free money. There's no strings attached.
We've earned due diligence on it.
Yep. I've done, I've done, I've done, I as superintendent have done four of these, and they were for more money than this, and I still haven't gotten anything back that that's a problem with. We just have to pay that bill directly, that's all.
And that's the electrical bill that we already have.
Correct. Yes. It just takes $10,000 off of that meter. That's all it does. It pays for it. The taxpayers have less of a responsibility, our budget has less of a responsibility. It doesn't mean it's not going to go up because electricity goes up every year, but it's a one-time.
That was my initial question. I immediately emailed back, wait, what's the catch? Yes. That was definitely a very, very good question. Ms. Shannon, yes.
I was curious as to whether this would offset any potential impact on the budget that we might be able to reallocate.
So utility costs are always up in the year, right? So we're currently somewhat down on utility costs with kilowatts. Depending on what the expectation is for the wintertime, we could be seeing it go the other way. So utilities for us is always an end-of-the-year thing. Do we need to move money to pay for more or did we save something and we can do something else with that, including in the past, returning it back to the town or making a one-time purchase of Chromebooks or whatever the case may be. Right now, in most cases, we're pretty flat according to our utility cost for this year. We haven't seen great savings, although we have at least two buildings that are just putting costs going out the windows. It is what it is. Like you know, my story of beating the dead horse, that it costs more to heat this building than it does the new high school. So pretty significant. But it would be an end-of-year thing that you could bring up again next fiscal year and say, hey, Joe, remember the 10 grand? Did we, we're able to save 10 grand and can we do something else with it?
Any other questions or comments? All right. So my instructions are that we vote to execute the agreement and authorize the superintendent to sign it. Is that your understanding as well?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Can I have a motion to execute the Select Solar On-Bill Credit Purchase and Sale Agreement and authorize the superintendent to sign it? All right. The motion is bade by Ms. Breckler. A second?
Second.
Oh, I'll give it to Mr. Barbosa. He's been quiet this evening. Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. So this motion's carried five zero. Thank you to Select Energy. Can't pass on free money, it seems. Bogus mind. Anyway. The next is, item on the agenda is an addition. This was added at the last minute. These are requests for extensions for town meeting articles. This is the backstory. The annual town meeting in May of 2023, last year, an article, somebody voted a sunset clause whereby if articles are not completed by a certain time, they are to be closed. That's very simplifying it greatly. Now, we have several articles that are still active. We can go before the special or annual town meeting to ask for extensions, or we can petition the select board for an extension. The administration feels that the three articles listed in our amended agenda can't wait for special town meeting in the fall, and they would like to petition the select board as soon as possible to request extensions on these articles to allow them to complete the projects. So the first is the, from special town meeting of November 2018, it was Article 4, Town Building and Systems, School Systems Telephone Upgrades. These, we did the best we could at the very last minute to find the supporting materials for this, but this was a project town-wide to purchase more telephone equipment. Currently, the district has no phones in stock and is in need of replacements for broken equipment and of additional phones for added classrooms. And this is something that really needs to be completed before the start of the school year, hence kind of the urgency for this. Dr. Beta, do you have anything to add about?
Yeah. So this is a perfect example of the catch-22 of the sunset. This is just one of those things where, you know, the, there was a good reason to do what was done at the time, but now it's causing that situation. Basically, we used the stock that we had as part of getting all of this done, and now we're in a bind in that catch-22 situation. It's the same issue, it's just coming back later within that article. That's all it is.
Yes.
Do you mind explaining why this was, this is an article from 2018.
Right.
And here we are in 2014. I just-
Yes. It's my understanding with the phone situation is that we ended up with a town-wide implementation of which the school department had some overstock and utilized that right away and then now has a negative need. So the money was there, the need for it was there, it was just a matter of timing, needing to put that in. We can't be doing phones in October, November, as an example, in the school department's side. So what happens is if you look at the plan that was put forward was to get those and have them placed, and there was a number of them. There were 80 users at town hall, 25 users at Station 1, 25 at Station 2, and it just lists them all. And what happened is we utilized some of ours to prioritize theirs and vice versa. And now we're in the pickle of not having enough for ourselves.
Are there any, this was a article for town and schools?
Yes.
Do you know if it's-
Yep. I don't have to break. No. I believe that we are the only department, but I can ask that question.
Warrant purchase.
Exactly.
Thank you. If helpful.
Questions?
I can only say that, you know, Monday morning quarterbacking is great. It's, this is always the biggest concern when you do it that way is, you know, and I clearly understand why the town has decided to move to a sunset class situation. And we do have a Attorney General's letter to Ms. Carrow, the then-town clerk, dated November 29th of '23, on Stoughton Annual Town Meeting of May 1, 2023, Case Number 1161, Warren, Article Number 70, general, of which she outlines, the Attorney General outlines the process of which an extension as needed may be granted by the select board is clearly articulated. I can get you a copy of that if you'd like it for your records. And so that's what we're utilizing. And this came through the process of biz in town hall taking the lead on cutting all of these articles according to that sunset clause, which that, as you know, a town meeting caused changes to- caused changes to those, but these became retroactive to articles. Instead of going forward, we went back, and so now you've got these three. And it doesn't mean it's going to happen. We're baking a request.
Looks like we're still, I think, reserves the right to some of the town meeting or something of that sort.
Correct.
So, we have that additional opportunity, yes.
Do any of these articles represent a cost in current day, or are all these, these are all, the funding has been paid for?
Yes, they're all based upon the original contracts. So yes, there would be some, quote, probably if we needed 40 phones, we're probably, if we can't get them for the same price, we'd be getting 37. Now, one of the questions I have in the process that I have not gotten an answer for you yet or myself, is did we make these orders and the company just has them, and we just need to get them and pay the bill? And they would probably go along with the original proposal? Or is it considered a new contract? Typically, articles, if there's a signed understanding, it would be grounded on that understanding, and then companies do their, do their magic in terms of do they, not. Perfect example would have been the situation we had on an old bill earlier this year for 5,000, where the company just said, no, don't pay the old bill, we'll give it to you as a donation.
Thank you. So my, I've separated these out, because for this one, the request was to request all remaining funds that are, that exist for this article, or to authorize the district, the administration, to request all remaining funds, to request an extension on this town article and pursue all remaining funds specifically for the purpose of the phones. Does that make sense?
We have to move and vote them separately?
Yes, move and vote them separately, because they, some of them have remaining funds, some of them do not have, some of them, we would have to request a specific amount. But this one, we know there are remaining funds in this, and we're asking to use those remaining funds to purchase phones for that amount and no more. If we need additional, then we're going to have to write a new article for a special town meeting in the fall.
So, do you move the motion?
Yes.
Okay. I will move that we...
How are we going up at this?
Petitioning, I move that we petition the select board to authorize any remaining funds...
Well, to request an extension.
Request an extension to...
Yes.
To request an extension to authorize any remaining funds for special town meeting November 2018, Article 4, Town Building and Schools System Telephone Upgrades. Is that...
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So that was me. I was correct. That was seconded. I was Shannon. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that was carried 5-0. And that brings us to the second one, which is annual town meeting, May 2, this is annual town meeting, May 2018, Article 17 dot F dot 3. This was to replace the air conditioning system at the Joseph Daw Elementary School. This is one they've pulled out because the electrical contract needs to be signed in order to order parts, which take 40 weeks at this point to come in, more or less. Once the parts have come in, they'll need to close the school for seven to 10 days to install the projects, and that has to be done once the school is done in June, and be completed by the start of extended school year. And so that would be for next summer, correct? And there is a solution in place for this summer, but we're looking at getting the process going so that we're able to, to take advantage of that timeline, those few days when the school is unoccupied, to do this for the next summer. So that is why this has been pulled forward. And again, this, we're looking for the remaining funds in the article, rather than asking for any additional funds. Anyway, yes. Trying to...
You have my notes.
Yes.
I have the same question.
Sure.
I apologize if you just spoke to it, but like, again, 2018, 2024, can we just speak to like the gap there? Just for context, I'm not trying to...
Yeah, yeah. So the biggest issue is that in a couple of different situations, with our, everything from boilers that we've done, and in this case, air conditioning, it's been wait, wait, wait. And in this particular case, the curveball for us was the electrical, which has been part of this process during day one, from day one, they, there just wasn't an order put in, and now the order is 40 weeks out from the time that we say yes. So it could be another two, three, four weeks before we even get that, if we get that. But it would complete the project as forwarded. I will say this, I think you've heard me say, and I know Mr. Ford has heard me at a couple of meetings within our team, these projects are taking too long. And I think the chair and the vice chair know probably more so about how I feel, that it's just taking too long. We need to prioritize these projects. I'm not finger pointing, but, you know, if we get $20,000 from town meeting at the May town meeting, I expect bids and everything else to be ready to go on July 1st. That's just the way I work. And that's the way we're going to work. But now we're caught in a bind, and we want to finish what we then told town meeting we were doing, then told the citizens, FinCom, select board, those of you that were on the committee at the time. So it's just a matter of crossing Ts and dotting Is, without asking for any new funding. I just don't think that's the proper route, unless there's a great emergency that would be needed.
I appreciate that. And then just also putting up there, for context, too, a pandemic happened somewhere in there.
Yes.
So like, you know, there's, things got slowed down.
Yes, supply chain issues happened.
Yeah.
And that's still affecting, still catching up on some, to some extent of that. Any other questions about this particular project in this town meeting? And this is the same thing, we're going to petition the select board to request an extension and to ask for all remaining funds for this town article. So we would like to throw that word out together.
I would like to move that we petition the select board to request an extension for the annual town meeting, May 2018, Article 17.5.3, Replace Air Conditioning System at Joseph Daw Elementary School, and to be able to access the remaining funds for that warrant.
All right. Thank you. That was me and Ms. Shannon. A second?
Second.
All right, seconded by Ms. Krecler. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, this motion's carried 5-0. That brings us to the third one, which is a little bit of a different animal. This is annual town meeting, May 2016, Article 1, The Stoughton High School Building Project. So this one, we're not looking for the remaining funds, we're asking, going to be asking for a specific amount. And that is because we need student and possibly teacher desks, plus possibly also cafeteria tables. The other issue that we need is that we need to address issues with the stage installation, which needs to be repaired and inspected. And again, this is something that needs to be done before the start of the school year. The student, teacher desk and cafeteria tables, obviously because we need those for the students, with our increased enrollment, the stage installation we need to have done because of safety issues. So this follows under borrowing authority. The town doesn't have the funds in hand for this one, unlike the other ones where the funds have been sort of, already sort of claimed. This is part of the full building project. There was no cost to the town until the costs are incurred. And I have a request for, is it 300,000?
Yes.
Okay, for this. So this is, draws on the full Stoughton High School project. If you remember, the elementary school building project was soup to nuts and included all sorts of materials along with this. So this would ask for the remaining funds out of the Stoughton High School building project that were designated to, for supplies and such things.
But there's, but the funds aren't...
Because that portion hasn't been borrowed, am I correct? So we don't borrow the full amount for the building project at once, we borrow in chunks.
As, as, okay.
As needed.
Is this one that we, is this so time-sensitive that it needs to be voted tonight, or can we wait until July? Because I think I'd like a little bit more, like, context and information.
So the issue here is time, right? Because whatever we do here, we're going to have, the biggest concern that we actually have, we have a safety issue that we want to address, but we also have a significant shortage. I mean, we're already moving some of our old elementary desks up to the high school in order to, right now, we have that happening. So it's a matter of, our enrollment is continuously increasing, and we can't stop the school year without having student desks. And those are going to be probably eight to 12 weeks out. You can do whatever you wish here, I mean, it's your call. The cafeteria desks, really, again, is, these are all enrollment issues that have taken place in the last couple of years. But if you want to put it off until July 30th, you can. If you want me to get you a, if you want to accept it and get you a written detailed of what that means from the business office, I can do that, too. Or you can wait until, if you wait until the 30th, it's six weeks of not being able to potentially, again, we don't even know when we're going to get in front of the select board. So if you wanted to, you know, have a virtual quick emergency meeting, because I'm able to get you some more information, we could do that, too, on this particular one.
I'm open to the committee's decision.
I just would like a little bit more context and like, more information about the safety issue, and just like to have some of that in writing, so I can kind of wrap my head around it. Because this is, I know it was, it was an amended agenda, so we don't have the...
It was literally, it's all due to, we have due dates that we also have to do with the select board as part of their process to close out stuff, so that's...
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure I like have time to absorb it and understand what we're doing.
I think I would like, like a firm quote of how many desks we're looking at in cafeteria tables and what the potential cost is. I know we have a ballpark estimate, but I think I would be a little bit more, yeah.
We are, well, we'll project enrollment anyways, right? Based upon what we're seeing, but we'll get you the number of desks, number of tables, number of student and teacher desks, and then the details on the stage. I can get that and write it to you sooner or later.
Okay. Ms. Shannon?
Dr. Baita, through you, Madam Chair. Just a point of clarification, this does not represent an extra cost on this year's fiscal budget for the school department. This is simply accessing funds that were initially approved in 2016 through town meeting for the school building project that we are just incurring at this time.
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right, so this one, we're tabling for the time, for the moment, and then we'll reconvene and figure out if we can do a virtual meeting, and, and once we've had the information to review. I'm fine with that. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's first year report. Again, we don't have to tackle all of this today, I know we have some other things on the, that we need to cover, but I wanted to begin the conversation. So Dr. Baita, if you would like to present?
Yeah, I won't go through the 19 page. Thank you, Madam Chair. I won't go through the 19 page that's there. Really, this is also an opportunity to just give you an update on all the things I said we were going to do over the two years. As you see, it's pretty comprehensive. I have a ton of backup materials, if you want to see it at any point. When we do have the final report to you, it will include all of that. Those are changing as we go. We've completed a number of items, as you know, we've got in-progress still and ongoing that's still taking place. I think the thing that I'm proudest of is how the team is working on this in unison to try to get you what we said we were going to do by the end of this coming year, which was the data points, and what does this really look like, and how can we make it move forward? We're also trying to get some of this, as you know, prior to the budget season for FY26, so it's two parts. The other thing that I typically have done in these type of situations is that this is an opportunity for us to meet one-on-one during the summer. Me and you, cup of coffee, let's talk about what you've liked, what you don't like, what you'd like to see more of, and this report is the beginning of that conversation. It can lead to many different roads, as many different roads as you like. And things that are not in here can be discussed in those one-to-one meetings, but I'll have, I'll ask Kathy to firm up some dates starting in July into August, so that I can have your feedback and incorporate those changes as I'm talking to the team about, well, they'd like to see more of this, or how come we haven't looked at that, and so on and so forth. If that makes sense.
Thank you. Ms. Powers, I know you aren't here for when we set these goals and discussed it, so I wanted to give you an opportunity to ask for clarification on what exactly we're doing here. Feel free to, feel free to say, I don't understand what this is about, or like, and I don't have to ask for...
I think I would, I think I would enjoy that one-on-one to sit down and to go over the goals, and maybe discuss a couple of the things, since I am new, some of the things that are a concern to me that have been brought up by family. So I look forward to it.
I have it on my things to do this.
Any questions or comments at this point? Yes?
Just thank you for putting this together. I think there's certainly some exciting progress being made, like high level, definitely excited to dig into it more over the summer and just talk through where we are, where we're going.
Yeah, and I want to thank Jonathan, who helps to meet a compiler, then I go through to make some changes and all that. But one of the great things about Stoughton Public Schools that no other district I ever worked in has is, and I want to outright thank Mr. Ford and my predecessors, is there's this concept of reporting that's taking place at the building level that comes through the superintendent. I'm now using that, I think it hasn't been done this way in a while, I'm thinking a few years back anyways, through a veteran that was here for a while, but I'm now using that to compile from each school, what the school council is saying, the improvement plan is saying, what the conditions of effective schools review has saying. And all those reports, I think there's a ton of them, I'm compiling those, and what I'm getting is some really good stuff. And I'll give you an example. The principals want to be more involved in district-wide decision-making processes. They want to be at that table, they just don't want to be part of doing it, very clearly articulated to me. So we're changing how we're doing some of our meetings, and who's going to be at those meetings and why. And it is more meetings, but the fact of the matter is, you can only be part of that decision process if you're there. So just one minor one, but it's actually a major one that I've heard articulated. So I'm getting that from those reflections coming from the schools, and now I'm able to give them back that opportunity to do so. And there's a million others that we can discuss as part of those discussions, but that's just one example. And some of these reports are brilliantly put together. One of them was mentioned earlier, just really deep thoughts about teaching and learning and equity and all of that stuff. But, and they're all well-done. I, you know, I'm not here to grade them, it's just an opportunity for them to give me information, which then you'll see in this report, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments at this point? Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Baita, for putting this together. It's a fascinating read, and obviously is evident of a lot of work by a lot of people throughout the district. I just want to preemptively let you know that I would love to have more detail on what success would look like and where we are now. Sometimes there's one number noted, but not the other in terms of data points, like an increase to 90%, but I'm like, is that 1% from where we are? Is that 50 percentage points from where we are? I don't know, you know? But, but really clarifying, you know, what would a successful outcome look like, and charting our progress according to that. The in-progress sometimes doesn't provide me with a lot of information to really get a strong assessment of, you know, what has been accomplished.
Yeah, great question. Remember that the clarity of this for us right now is, we're in the process of collecting a lot of this, what is our baseline data? Right? And we're doing that as a refresher. As you know, everybody has different thoughts on data and what's good data and so on and so forth. So one of the decisions that we made through the curriculum office, through tech, through Mr. Ford's office, is, for example, bringing onboard the educator system, which collects all of our data around students. So that process was, we said we were going to find the right platform, we reviewed a ton of different ones, and then came to a decision. So now, we're going into a year, we're actually getting trained the first two weeks of leadership in August 8th and 9th, something like that? Can't remember. I mean, July, sorry. And so now we're all getting trained, myself included, for two days on how to look at that data, what to look for in that data, how to use the platform and all of that stuff. So now that will create me coming back to you with a finished plan, the end of 25 of, so this is what our baseline data is looking like, and this is the goal to go to the next step. So that's what, that's the idea. Yep.
Any other questions or comments at this time? Again, this will be something that's ongoing, so this is just part of the check-in for the process. I really appreciate all the work that's gone into this, so thank you for that. And now we come to a whole bunch of policies. We have a little bit of a backlog here. We, I think the working group has realized that we don't need to take on half the book, the policy manual at one time, but again, these are the second, in some cases, third readings of these policies. They're open for discussion tonight. open for discussion tonight. After the discussion, the discussion, the committee may choose to send the policies back to the working group. We, we choose to vote on them tonight or in a following meeting. So if there are no objections, I'd like to start going through these and sort of explaining if they're new, what the, if they're existing, what the changes are. So the first is DGA purchasing authority. This is a new policy. The MASC, Massachusetts Association of School Committee, has been recommending additions of policies, a lot of them around purchasing authority and procurement, and this is the ones that they have recommended. So any questions or comments on this one? And Mr. Ford, please jump in if there's any more anything to add to this one.
It's just, establishes the purchasing authority within the district. So it's, it's pretty straightforward.
Questions, comments? No. All right, moving on, is DJE procurement requirements. Again, this is a new one proposed by MASC, and I opened up this, again.
And this, this reflects, if you look at this, specifically the $100,000 reflects a change in Massachusetts law authorizing schools in terms of bidding process to go to $100,000 threshold as opposed to $50,000 where it previously existed. And that was under, I believe, 30B.
Any questions or comments on DJE?
This one's new.
This one is new, so we don't, don't currently have one.
This is new to Stoughton.
New to Stoughton.
But this was an existing MASC policy. Some of these policies are, are new outright, and some are policies that just in the past the school committee hadn't adopted.
Do you have any human context as to what that decision-making process might have been like previously?
So some, I mean, some of these things came online and just through the review process didn't come forward. And to talk to a specific, some I can because that, that process, we rid of the entire policy manual, it's about eight years ago. This one I don't specifically remember, but, but it's, it might be something where we established the fact, and the conversations we previously had, if it's covered by state law, it doesn't necessarily need to be a school committee policy, specifically related to 30B. I mean, it's, it's just, it's changes, it's dynamic. Do we want to update our policies every time that that might be changed or, or reinterpreted? In our, my discussions with, with MASC policy, with this specific policy and similar ones, you know, they're going to make the recommendation, it's good to have in your policy manual so that people that come to look and see how we operate don't have to then go and search, because then you're providing the reference back to like 30B. So if they want to get more into it, they can go ahead and they can pursue that. But this gives somebody within the community the ability to understand what we do and how we do it. So it's.
Is that going through actual law?
Yeah, so you, you can actually, it's like one-stop shopping in terms of how this committee and this district functions as opposed to having to invest yourself in understanding the myriad of different things from, from state laws, regulations, and even go into like court decisions, how those things impact us.
I could say that I've found this helpful as I've gotten questions from community members or had questions about, even from other town officials, like how do you approach these or what, what are your policies on how, how these things come to be? So I, I think we can find this helpful as well rather than us having to go and read this, the, trying to figure out from law, the law, what it, what's the actual reason or the process.
Thank you.
Again, we don't have to adopt all these. These are, we are recommending them, so certainly up for discussion and debate.
I also think it's important to note that, that when we go through the recommended policies, we don't bring everything forward that MASC recommends. So I'd say probably about three-quarters of what's up for discussion, we'll, we'll accept what they have to say and make minor adjustments. But, but not everything that we review does in fact make its way to the table.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions on DJE, EB is an existing policy. There's been some updated language for this one recommended by MASC. Personally, we kind of liked the updated language because it's a little less dramatic, and traumatic. So it, but it does kind of clarify a few things and eliminates some sort of doom and gloom language. Any questions on EB? All right, EBB is first aid, and this one, we, was updated language as well. This is existing policy. I actually think Mr. Barbosa helped, there were some kind of unclear things about who was being referred to, who was having the first aid and so on and so forth. So this was clarification really. And also the school physician change to Board of Health reflects current practice. So this one is updated as well. Any questions on EBB? All right, ABC is emergency plans. This, these updates, again, an existing policy, these updates are, reflect current practice. The AEDs, the Automated External Defibrillators are in the schools now.
Yeah, this reflects the fact that we have to have them as opposed to was an option before.
Right. And I think there were some updates at the bottom of reviewing the response with place and fire, again, updating to reflect current practice. So any questions on EBC? No, all right. ECA is a new policy. This is current practice for the most part, so this would just be kind of, again, explaining to the public what the expectations are. The one benefit of having this specific policy is that it, it allows us to require student funds be locked up, not just tucked in a drawer somewhere. So I think that is beneficial to have. We can point to somebody and say, no, we really do need to have these student funds secure, in a secure location. So that was one benefit of, you know, to answer your question, why have this spelled out, this one here allows us to sort of point to that as being something that we require rather than something that we assume is best practice. Any questions on ECA? All right. Yes, no. Okay, all right. The next is EHAA. This is a new one, a new, a new proposed policy. Mr. Ford informed us that the district is updating security, and this reflects kind of the practices that are being put into place. So any questions or comments about this one? Yes?
Yeah, no, exactly what you said. I mean, we are in the process of updating it security right now. Our new tech director is spectacular. I mean, he's all over this. He's invested a lot of time into it. This, this is one of the policies MASC was putting in place to fill in some gaps in their existing policies.
All right. There are no questions on EHAA. I'd like to move to EHB, data and records retention. This is a new policy to Stoughton. One of the things this does is that previously we had data and records retention under the business office, is that correct? And this one specifically places it under human resources, which makes a little more sense.
And this, and this is another gap policy from MASC, addressing gaps in their existing policy manual.
Any questions on EHB? All right, moving on to GBEA, staff ethics slash conflict of interest. This one is an existing policy with some clarifying language in that. Just to make it clear, this one certainly seems timely to revisit before a lot of the elections coming up. Any questions about GBEA? All right, hearing none. GBEB. This one, we primarily cleaned up the language and the legal, legal references. This was another recommendation from MASC, but we sort of did some of our own work on this one. Any questions on this particular one? Yes, no. All right. The next one is a little bit longer. This is GBEBD, which concerns online fundraising and solicitations slash crowdfunding. This is a new one to Stoughton and certainly seems like kind of a new thing that has come up recently in the past, you know, few years. So certainly something that seems applicable to, to us.
Yeah, we do have a fundraising policy, but this just moves beyond what that policy covers to give you more coverage.
I know, Ms. Powers, you had some concerns about fundraising, and so I hope this addresses some of the issues, yes, that.
This is extroverted.
Yes, certainly, hopefully fills some gaps and offers some clarification on these particular practices. So any comments on GBEBD? Say that three times fast. Yes.
Clarification of process, Madam Chair. If we need to revisit any of these policies at any time, do we have the ability to do that at future meetings?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
You could even come back next to me and say, wait, this one I have, there's something, maybe something new comes out in the next month and we need to reconsider something, or we hear of an instance and we need to revisit that. So I certainly can revisit them at any time.
And in fact, just make a comment. You absolutely should be doing that.
Yes. All right, the next is GBE, personnel use of technology. This is another one that's new to Stoughton. Mr. Ford, can you go a little bit more and kind of dig in?
This is, this is a new MASC policy, and this is another, in the policies that we recently reviewed, there are a number of policies they were putting in place just to address gaps in their existing policies. This is another example of that. And this just complements other policies that we already have in place.
Again, digital issues, digital technology being more of, more and more of an issue than it was perhaps even eight years ago when we revisited the policy book.
Yeah, and these, and these will be the policies that I would anticipate you're going to come back and address more frequently, because it is, it's just so dynamic right now.
Right. Any questions, comments on GBE? All right, the next one is GBGB, staff personal security and safety. This one has updated legal references and sort of, yeah, updated legal references, and this one, to some extent, may be addressed by part of the wellness policy. So this one is, has a, has a few changes in it. You may note, if there are any questions about this one.
This paragraph that's removed, do you mind me speaking to that?
Yes, the paragraph that's removed, I believe is the legal reference, like this has been.
Yeah, that's, that's no longer something we should be doing.
Yes.
About like pre-employment.
Exactly.
Okay.
So yes, we shouldn't be doing it.
We shouldn't be doing it.
Like the reference has been removed.
We don't do that, actually.
We don't do it, so.
We should remove it from the policy.
Reflecting personal, current use as well. The next one is GBGE, domestic violence leave policy. This is a new policy to Stoughton, but this is current practice, and again, something that we really should have spelled out so that faculty and staff who need it, unfortunately, are able to access this information and have it all laid out.
And this is, this is actually state law, but this is the interpretation of the law as applicable to schools by and through the MASC.
I know this one is hard to read, but I really feel this one is something that is worthwhile having laid out, even if it is state law.
Yeah, because if you read, if you read the state law, this would actually be applicable to every employer. So this, this fine-tunes it to what we do in this context.
Yeah, so it kind of puts it all in one place, so it looks.
Yep.
And again, you know, certainly somebody who's in a situation having this easily accessible and not having to wade through state law and wonder if this applies to me or not, I think is really beneficial. Any questions on GBGE? All right, the next one is GBI, staff participation in political activities. This is an existing one with some updated legal references into it. Key addition here is the public employees are prohibited under state law from soliciting funds for, for political campaigns. This was something that needed to be added. Any questions on GBI? All right, the next one, we're getting close to the end, I promise, is HA, negotiation goals. The next three are existing policies with language changes. This one has a few just kind of language changes to clarify. The biggest addition is the, is the one of representatives for the school committee as part of negotiations.
Do you have any context?
Mr. Ford.
Oh, this just allows you to set expectations and delegate to your representative's same expectation.
And a representative would be legal counsel, for example, or superintendent.
I thought it was young people changed to students. That sounds like a 50s, you know, in the 1950s, you'd say, young people, the youths.
I don't know how old this language.
It's funny that, that in the existing policy manual, if we made every change like that, that MASC recommended, we'd be doing like hundreds of, so you're going to notice, we're going to pick those off as we do more substantive changes.
Right. Yeah, we are slowly changing some language, changing to gender-neutral language, changing select bin to select board, changing, there's, there's kids, yeah, it varies. Sometimes it's children, sometimes it's young people, so changing that slowly to students. So we will get toward to that. More consistent language throughout. But any questions on HA other than the young people comment? HB is negotiations legal status, and this was a legal change, legal reference change, and that was to correct. The paragraph that was quoted is not the correct.
Well, what they did is they shifted from 150E section two as the legal quote to 150E section one. So, so you're seeing section two struck, you're seeing the legal reference amended to section one, and the section one component put in place.
Yes, this was a change in, in legal quotation. All right, and the last one is HF, school committee negotiating, negotiating agents. This, again, existing policy with some language changes, added in all other mandated subjects of bargaining to sort of cover all over everything else, the et ceteras. But the other important change is the properly posted executive session. Again, this is state law, but clarify practice.
Yeah, and, and basically in talking to Jim Hardy about this, you don't want to restrict yourself in terms of what you bargain. And that particular piece, the additional, that second piece, was because people were actually making that mistake. So they just wanted to provide clarification so their member districts weren't falling into a trap or making a, a small mistake in terms of negotiations.
Those of you who haven't participated in negotiations will get to experience this all soon. So any questions on HF? All right, so we have all of these, and we have the option to vote them all together en masse tonight if people feel comfortable. If there are any questions, I'm happy to pull them out.
This is, was this, this was the first read for all of them?
No, this was the second read. They've all been in the pockets. Eight, yes. The first, the Ds and Es.
Sorry, it's the first read. I mean, like, we haven't spent time in a meeting.
No, we haven't seen, talked about it, that's correct.
So like first read at a meeting.
Yes.
They've been in my.
They've been in our pockets, but we haven't discussed them. So happy to, if somebody, if we want to table them and vote them in as a slate in July, we can do that. None of them are really pressing.
No.
No, so, I mean.
And you, as a committee, you have the option, if, if nothing's contested, you have the right to vote it after the, the second session, discussion session, or you can simply wait till the third and vote it at that time.
So I'm willing to do whatever the committee feels comfortable with for these. Didn't want to knock them off, but certainly give you some time. Yes, I know.
Can I ask that we table them for now and vote on them as, as one slate?
Sure. I'm happy to do that. If everyone's okay with that. All right. All right, so we will look at voting those in July. And then we come to unfinished business, the FY 2025 budget and articles. Dr. Baeda?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. So you have the memo in front of you with some number crunching of some significant issues before us. First of all, let me just note the kindergarten classrooms at the Gibbons are at currently 25 students, at the Wilkins at 22, at the Hanson at 23, and at the South at 19. As you know, these are all numbers above what our practice has been with this age group. And as you know, we also have the Para situation that were part of cuts. This does not include the potential of the migrant students at this time. And the reason for that is, starting in July, the Commonwealth will be notifying families that are in the shelters that they have to move. We do not know what that impact is going to be to our sheltered students at this time. I will tell you that the, we had a child say goodbye to his peers and teachers yesterday, and it formally basically said, my dad has said that we're leaving. So that's already starting to happen. But that wasn't a state mandate. That was a family that's going into a, a different living situation. So we have some significant class size issues. One in particular that sticks out is the grade three classroom at the DAR is currently at 20. at 27 per classroom. That's probably some of the highest numbers we've ever seen. And the Gibbons, as you can see, is at 24, 22, 24, 24, and 24 for grades one through five. So we have a lot of number crunching. And again, we got the churn that's going to be happening end of this month into, into, into July. So I'm not, I'm not seeking any potential vote on adding new positions at this time. I'm going to be conservative in this approach. The other part that's important is, we do now know that any student that is a migrant sheltered student that was not in the October 23 count for Chapter 70, that's 65 students, are, and if they stay here, they will be, we will be provided $104 per migrant student that wasn't enrolled as of October 1st, '23. So that's 65 students that we know of, plus the 35 to 40 kindergarten. So we're going to be around 100 students, again, depending on what happens with this state mandate. That is also currently, right now, would be monies for September to December, as the Commonwealth Legislature did not address what happens from December through July. So, excuse me, June of '25. However, looking at some of this, some of these issues, we have concerns in those kindergarten classrooms. Again, I'm not asking for any new positions there. The deliberation is around the paraprofessionals. And as of tomorrow, those paraprofessionals who want to will begin collecting unemployment. We're going to have to find those monies as well. So I have a concern about not trying to recall those positions sooner than later, as well as the nursing position. And to be quite honest, I've just found out that the nursing and the assistance in that situation, we would be looking at contract services. And as you know, that's a problem for us because that line item is already too high, and it costs more money to do contract services than it does to keep or nurse. So those are situations such as feeding tubes, heart failure, type 1 diabetes, just to give you three scenarios of what's happening throughout our district of students that have significant medical care. We also do not have these students on a one-to-one nursing situation or placed out of district. In other words, we're able to utilize all of our resources to be able to, to handle it as much as possible. So the question here becomes, not ready to look at kindergarten new staffing, although we may have to have that discussion in July, because these class sizes cannot start the school year with 27 kids and 24 kids. I'm sorry?
That's average.
Average for?
27 kids.
It's average? Well, that's the average right now, correct. And that would...
Classes would hire in 27?
Potentially, yeah, because we don't have that enrollment. We don't know who's leaving yet, but there's always something that could happen there, but we also don't know who's coming in. It's really the kindergarten that's the issue, because we always in Stoughton have a history of seeing in August a climb of all of a sudden, kids are enrolling. So that's going to be our biggest issue to, to deal with. The medical issue, the tech hardware, software, right now, I need to wait on all of that. The late bus run, that was a secondary thought on, but again, we don't have to address that issue today. That's not an issue. But we do have some revolving funds in the transportation account that is still there that we could utilize, and that would be secondary only. Bless you, we would not have any elementary late bus runs. And part of that is, we also saw that it was expensive and the use was minimal. District-wide, at times, less than 30 students versus the secondary, both from the middle school and the high school, especially now that we have sports at the middle school, the secondary buses are much fuller, plus all of our student activities, the arts, so on and so forth, that we, that we have that utilize the bus. Those students wouldn't have any other transportation. So the, the big issue is, we know we're going to more than likely have to recall paraprofessionals. We know that we're going to have to figure out how to bring these class sizes down in the K program and that one classroom in, in grade three at the DAR. But here's the biggest problem. So we have, of course, the funding that we have to find, and then we have a space problem. So the space issue is a concern because in talking to, for example, the Hanson principal for kindergarten, it would be finding a different place for the library, because that's what they're down to. The DAR school is going to be the same scenario. There are a couple of other changes we can make. We'd have to spend some money on dividing some classrooms for specialized classrooms so we could open up regular classrooms. So this is going to be a lot of moving parts during the month of July and probably into the, hopefully no later than the first week of August. The question before us is, we are going to start seeding, seeing potentially unemployment claims that have a cost. That line item right now is at $25,000. So we would still have to find money for unemployment if, in fact, we have to start paying for unemployment costs. So by recalling, we're giving them a reasonable assurance letter that we reasonably assure you that you will have a job in the fall. That reasonable assurance letter is exactly that. We reasonably ensure if there's, in fact, a situation that doesn't allow for it to happen, then it didn't. I can't see how it doesn't happen. I just don't know how we, we open up with 25 kids in a kindergarten classroom. Adding a paraprofessional isn't good enough. It's just another body. Now, now you've got 27 people in there, a teacher, a paraprofessional, and 24 kids, excuse me, 25 kids. So we don't see that as the answer as well. So it's, it's really a financial situation that we're in. There's a lot of other needs, but right now, I think we have to go with the safest route of the, the PARAs and the nursing situation and leave it at that and see where we end. The way we would compensate for it is in savings and other line items. What I don't want to do, and what I've asked to do, is all of our positions that are in contract services for the one-to-one paraprofessionals and, and for all of those situations, the RBTs and the speech-language assistants, those are currently outposted. They're no longer under contract services. It doesn't mean we're not going to be in contract services, because if nobody applies and I still need that speech-language assistant, I don't have a choice. Our contract services go from a low end of $55 an hour to a high end of $85 an hour. So it's pretty significant cost. It's over $700,000 right now. I think that's a huge number for contract services, but that speaks to what we were paying paraprofessionals prior to this new contract. So you would be a one-to-one paraprofessional in Stoughton at $15 an hour. Nobody's taking it. And that's the reason why we had, I believe, one or two this year. Everything else in those situations is in contract services, 55 to 85 an hour. So, and we know that the person isn't making that. It's just because they're working for a third party. We cannot hire those folks directly from those contract services per the contract agreements without paying out, on average, a one-time $10,000 cost or four months of salary, which, of contract, whichever is greatest. That was the signed contracts that have been in place for a while. So those have been reviewed, and of course, we're looking at how we could change those. But if we have to use contract services, we're probably going to be stuck for a while. Hopefully, the increase on the hourly rates to our paraprofessional contract will allow for us to have paraprofessionals from other districts that want these jobs because our salaries are more competitive. Questions and thoughts?
So I just want to start out with saying that we are looking at having some potential savings going into FY '25. We've had a couple of administrative positions. We've had resonations, potential resonations among other staff. And so we could potentially use those to pay for some of our priorities, the kindergarten paraprofessionals, the nurses, the secondary bus, and something like that. So we are going to be able to...
Yes.
...prioritize that.
Yes, and so I've worked with Heidi on, and, excuse me, with, with Ms. Perkins as the finance, and Mr. Colantonio. Our hiring process is in a good place. Of all the hiring that we've had to do, only two positions have come above our standard new, no higher than, I think it's M4 or M5, if I remember correctly. I don't want to misplace you. So that's where we're picking the money off of, is new savings to new positions and situations. Remember that in the original allocation, we had taken the difference already. So if somebody went out at $100,000, we said we're going to hire at 65. So if we hire at 59, we save six grand. We've already taken the difference as part of not having to cut more staffing. Typically, in a good year, we would have that $30,000 difference, and we'd be able to not be as tight as we're going to be. The third payment for the migrant students is also due sometime in July and August. As you know, we froze the budget, ran negatives in line items, so that's how we're making up for that. I don't see a ton of money being left over there. But again, that's coming in as a grant, so that gives us the flexibility to utilize in FY '25. The key for us this year is really going to be what the legislature decides to do after the December situation. We can't see why they wouldn't continue to do the $104, but there's no guarantee there. What happens to the economy between now and then? How many of the students actually leave versus stay? I think we're going to, how many of them are new? I can't imagine that a shelter says to certain families goodbye, and that doesn't mean that other families aren't coming in. So we could see an increase in that. And my position on this to the committee would be, use those funds to make sure that we're getting direct services in the classroom because they're directly impacting our class sizes. So to me, that's the most important part, is at least, if we know we're having an impact by students that are coming in that are not accounted for in our Chapter 70, use those monies. We know they're one-time, right? When we go to finance in the fall and town meeting and all of that, we're going to have to have a picture of, those kids are now supposed to be moved in this new October 1st for FY '26, they're supposed to move into Chapter 70, like the 26 kids from last year did. So they'd be accounted for there. If they're there, the $104 now would be gone. So the status plan is October 1st, $104 thing. If we had 100 students stay and they were here all year, that's about $1.7 million. And we would not be using that throughout the year, except as needed and right away to bring our class sizes. If we have 100 students here on the first day of school, or 75 students, we're looking at a half a million to 700,000 just for September to December, those funds, our one-time funds, would take care of those positions, i.e. the K positions, for the entire year. Even if you lost funding after January, those funds would still be there. And then lastly, we will, we will have more changes in staffing. It's just a, it's a, it's a fact. It's just part of the economy we're in. People are looking at other jobs. People are moving closer to home, out of state, whatever the case may be. A unemployment situation is, pays up to 60% of the person's salary for the year. So we have to account that somebody could be out unemployed. If we bring them back with reasonable insurance on the PARA situation, then what that would mean is we get zero going out right away to the, to unemployment for those positions. Versus, until they get that letter, they can collect unemployment every single day until then. By the way, there could be potentially that we have to make challenges after we give them the recall. In other words, your recall, then folks still file for unemployment. Then we have to work with, Matt works with the town out of HR to challenge while somebody... Some people file for unemployment but never collect unemployment. They do that as a protection clause because there's legal, legal, there's rules within that, once you're unemployed in a position, that you have the right to file for unemployment right away. I don't know if that makes sense. There's a lot there, I know.
Yeah. I want to kind of tease out the fact that the money that we are expecting from the state for the shelter population, starting July 1st, we are looking at using to prioritize district-wide needs. So it would be...
Correct.
...beneficial to the full students. Obviously, the shelter population factor into the kindergarten situation, but even without them, we are, we need additional kindergarten support. And so that this will benefit students throughout the district. And I want to point out, our ideal kindergarten class size is 18...
Correct.
...and our ideal regular class size for the elementary school is 19. So these are huge numbers. I know the state thinks 25 is okay, but for us, that is a very big number. I want to give other people to ask questions or comments, so, anybody?
I'm still worried about space, you know, physical space.
Yeah, yeah. So that, so our biggest issue right now, and what we're really trying to target, is the whole idea of the physical space and what that means. Because, you know, we can move libraries around. I mean, it's not the best, but we can do that. But that is the reason why earlier tonight in the superintendent's update, I said we need to have those discussions about redistricting in September, because it's about a year of planning. So if we had gotten the new building of it in '27, now we're looking at '26. But we're also looking at another thing that Mr. Ford and I talked about earlier today, and that is modular classrooms.
Yeah. That's, I would say, even with redistricting, that doesn't solve the problem.
That's correct.
Schools are full.
Correct. So you'd still be looking at, in some cases, the specialized classrooms might give you some flexibility. I'll give you an example. Both the DAR school and the Gibbon schools kindergarten classrooms are significantly large. That's the way they was built. Potentially, you could divide those classrooms. So there's some materials and labor there, plus police, police fire and inspections that you have to go through. But now that takes away a regular classroom, two regular classrooms into two smaller spots and opens up a larger classroom space for a grade three. So that's one potential thought. It's not ideal. Same thing with the library situation. That's not. And they all cost. They all have a cost, and those costs are not part of our budget. The, the situation with our enrollment, we will know about the second week of August, third week of August, where do we really stand with these numbers? Did we lose 10 and pick up 20? Did we lose 20 and pick up 10? That's going to be the, that's the catcher, that's the catch-22 for us right now.
So just in terms of next steps, we're kind of keeping our finger on the pulse for now, in terms of enrollment changes, in terms of state funding, like what, what happens next? To make sure I'm clear.
Yeah, so the, the big question that we, that we have is, as I said, as of today, our paraprofessionals and interventionist nurses, all of those folks that are laid off can begin unemployment. And my concern is that we're going to drive a six-figure cost into unemployment, that we could potentially, in the case of the recall of the PARAs, we could potentially recall the PARAs, not claim unemployment. You can always unemployment, unemployed them again in the fall, but a reasonable insurance stops us from having to do so. I just don't see how we're going to open up the school year with 25 kids in a kindergarten classroom without classroom support.
And so in terms of next steps, we need to just, like, wait and see where the enrollment numbers land early August? I just want to make sure I'm understanding clearly, like, what we...
So if, so if we, if we don't recall folks ASAP, we stop paying unemployment. So if we waited till August...
In fact, we have, like, June 18th.
Effective, effective, the first day that they're out, so it would have been yesterday. Except for anybody at the South, it would have been today. So the next day, they can, they can file for unemployment and begin that process. And my concern is, as you look at, some of our interventionists would not file for unemployment because they're retirees. They're not going to go down that route. A few of them will. And some folks may get a job right away, especially because they're potentially looking for health care right away. Remember, you become unemployed, that's, that goes away as well. So do you, A, make your recall, they know you're going to make, you need to make because of the class sizes and where they are, and do those recalls now and not create a significant unemployment line item that we have to? So the, here's the other difference, is Stoughton's unemployment for the schools is within your operating budget. That's not true of most communities. But that's the way it's always been here. It's not new. So that means, when that bill comes in, we, we have, we have to pay that bill, if you will. So do you, and if you know that you're, you're gambling, you're taking the chance, that you're recalling folks, and then there is no money and you're laying them off again, you have to wait it till the first day of work, but you're not paying them throughout the summer. So those are the two. Remember, these folks, if they're taking insurance, they've already prepaid July and August as part of the, their, the 21 payment, the 26 payment, 21 payment plan for health care. So we're in a catch-22 of, of our next steps. But my concern is creating a six, six-figure line item for unemployment, and then I'm just throwing away the money.
I just want to make sure I understand it right. Because unemployment, we could be paying 60% of salary and get nothing for it, in return.
That's correct.
Yeah, but if we pay the other 40% to make 100% salary, we do have those PARAs back. So we're, with unemployment, we're actually throwing away 60% of their salary.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're paying them to not be here because they're unemployed.
Yeah.
So you're, you're trying to make up the 40% difference. That's the, the, the chance is the 40%. Now, there's... to make up the 40% difference. That's the... The chance is the 40%. Now, there's could be, like I said, I don't want to misinform you, there could be people who don't decide to take unemployment. It's too much of a hassle. It's a short span. I don't want the money because I have to set it up where they're taxing me, not taxing me, so on and so forth. I got another job. Those are all things. That's the other concern, is that these folks do get another job, and now I'm actually looking to hire someone new. That actually will save us money because now I'm not paying unemployment. But I still know I need the position.
Any other questions, comments on budget?
Thank you for putting this together.
Sure.
I know this has not been an easy task. It's a challenging thing to balance. So once again, just to reiterate Lindsey's comment, so we pretty much hang tight and wait until mid-August till some of these numbers clarify, correct?
Yeah. If you do so, then again, you're creating the line item that we're gonna have to pay of unemployment.
The potential UI. Yep. Okay. And regardless of what we decide to do, how we move forward at this point, there is still the issue of overcrowded classrooms that will continue into next fiscal year, and the need for additional teachers, perhaps at different grade levels or even within different buildings next year, correct?
That is correct. And to the class sizes that are before you and the memo that provided to you, the nine students going to the DAW migrant students, the eight to the Gibbons, the four, those are not part of your class sizes right now. And the reason I did that was for no reason except, I need to know if those classroom sizes are as real as we think they are, and then we have to add more students, or they're actually better and we don't have to worry about it. X number of kids could move out of the DAW grade three classroom and take the 27 and make it 24. We're in okay. We're okay. 24 is okay. It's not where we want to be, but we're okay. So I don't want to... I guess my point is, I don't want to create positions for the purposes of enrollment, but I'm trying to not pay out unemployment for positions that we know we're gonna need one way or the other. And the nine is not definitive of the 12 FTEs, the 14 FTEs for the... Excuse me. The 12 FTEs with the 14 people, because we did have part-time folks. So any of those nine is gonna be a combination of tackling, probably at best, half-time into a classroom.
Okay. Best-case scenario, nothing changes. We don't get excessive new enrollment. We still need the paras.
Well, I don't... You know, with these class sizes, they're not 18, as you can see from the chart. And so...
We need them anyway.
Right.
Even if the class don't get any bigger, we still need them.
Right. The issue for us is that our enrollment for kindergarten could not have been projected to be where it is. We're just... The door, the registration office is every day. And we're not seeing the turn going out the other way. The loss of 10 students in one month is not happening at the early grades. It's predominantly at the secondary grades.
Seems like the solution's pretty easy, though.
Yeah. I mean, what the business office and I have done is basically said, if you agree to this as part of the recall, then we know that X number of dollars right off the top in all of our savings has to come to finish this off. I have to come back to you in July and say, I recalled them. We have... The money is already there. So I know I have $225,000 in administrative positions that are not currently being funded. We had two resignations in that. So we know that that part of money is available to be part of this recall. And then I know from the current hirees that we've made some savings there, that is getting us conservatively 80 to 85% of the way to do these recalls. So I feel comfortable believing that it's gonna be there. And that doesn't include other savings or other resignations that we're gonna get. And like I said earlier, I know for a fact that there are a couple of administrators that are actively looking.
The $200,000 towards paying that 40%, and save us the 60%.
Correct.
So anyway...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Solution is pretty obvious, I think, after you gave us all that data.
It's... The issue here is, I've cut budgets and paid out three quarters, and paid out a quarter of a million dollars in unemployment in the summertime. And that just doesn't make any sense to me. And so I will... I didn't expect our migrant situation to take place at all, not at the numbers. We had to freeze the budget and keep our budget within 542,000, whatever it was in change of headaches that we had all year. And then the money came in later, as you know, and we're able to balance our budget for the year. If the migrant payment comes in from the third payment and we're able to have $90,000 left over, then you know that it's going to offset these recalls that have taken place. We're damned if we do and damned if we don't. That's the scenario we're in. It's a matter of how comfortable do we feel one way or the other.
Is there any way we could get actuals in terms of the potential costs of the positions? It seems that we have, you know, really Priority One to fund, you know, the 405. It sounds like that's the max, that's the ceiling there. But it also seems like Priorities Two and Three, based on the information you provided, are as urgent as Priority One. So we're looking at at least 523,000. Where are we with the cost, the actuals of the potential funding bucket? How close can we come to that number?
So for tonight only, the funding budget that we're asking for is the nine paraprofessionals and the nurse. And so that the... All of the kindergarten positions, which would be new positions, and the grade three, which would be a new position because of class size, and all other items on there are currently not in play. Those have to wait. And the late bus, I can wait on, because I just need to have a sidebar with the contractor that it may happen, and I'll let you know by August 1st.
So what would be the actual cost if we recalled all of them?
It'll be... Yes. It'll be $274,000. And that would be the allocation I'd be seeking.
Thank you.
I'll get that in a memo form to you as well.
Okay. Yeah. Just to clarify, so your recommendation for tonight is that we, what, recall five kindergarten paraprofessionals so that we don't have to pay unemployment over the summer, knowing that we can always re-lay off in the fall if we need to? Again, the words aren't...
Yeah.
And then also recall a nurse, again, to avoid...
Correct.
And then depending on where the funding from the state and any resignation savings land in the summer, we'll have a better sense of what we can do in the...
Any new positions, I need to put a financial plan for you to vote on, because it's above and beyond.
Yeah. And these aren't new. These are just recalling for tonight.
So the nine paraprofessionals and a nurse are recalls.
And that's... And so everything else is a wait-and-see?
Everything else has to...
Where enrollment lands, where funding lands, where savings land?
Correct.
Okay. And that's the recommendation? Recall five paraprofessionals?
Nine.
It says five to nine.
You said five to nine.
So there were 14 originally. Four were part-time?
Correct.
So we're technically only recalling the nine. Is it because the four part-time ones do not collect unemployment?
So that's one. Two, the seniority in that particular case is, could be that a part-timer could be moving into a full-time position, right? They have recall rights now. They also may have, somebody says, "No, thanks. I'm not coming back. Had enough." But so now you're saving that, and I wouldn't move on that. I would just let it sit as an empty position until, in fact, we were able to come back. I'm hearing that some folks are not coming back. Do I know that to be a fact? I won't know that until they sign the recall letter. Does that make sense?
So where we could authorize nine to be recalled, but only five may technically be recalled?
For... Once you recall the number, then that employee has, under their contract, they can say, "No, I don't want to be recalled." By the way, they have 18 months in the contract. And so we would then just fight unemployment because we've offered them an opportunity to come to work. That's a process in itself. We've actually already done that once this year in another situation. And then the same thing with the school nurse. It's the same situation. And that's basically, that comes down to not only unemployment, but its contract services is gonna go up. And I don't think that's the right approach for us to go. It just costs more money.
And just to clarify, the paying out unemployment just makes this fiscally urgent to make this decision as soon as possible. But that's not the reason that we need the staff back in these schools. We need them back to support the larger kindergarten class sizes, and we need the additional nurse back to ensure the health and safety of students based on nurse visits at the various schools. So there is an imperative there in terms of the staffing support that we need. But we want, we need to make this decision now, just because of the fiscal urgency and the potential impact on our budget if we do not.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes. I'll leave it at that. Well said.
Any other comments or questions? All right. So we need a motion to...
I move to authorize the recall of nine kindergarten paraprofessionals and one nurse.
Is that...
That's correct.
Is that what we need?
Yes, please.
Okay. That's the motion. Okay.
Second.
All right. So that was made. I was correct, and seconded by... Shannon, it's been moved and seconded. Vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. That motion has carried 5-0.
Adam, if I may, the next step in this is, once I receive notification, you'll get a memo from me on exactly what takes place. So we authorized 274. It might be only 199. And now you know you have another X number of dollars to the side. And then we would continue to wait on that until our July 30th next meeting. Once we get to July, we're gonna have to make some real critical decisions, because hiring in August, you folks know, is difficult. But I know this is difficult, but I thank the committee for doing so.
All right. Moving on to the elementary school building project update and responsibilities. The special election for the debt exclusion was held on Tuesday, June 11th. The final results were 2,320 yes, 2,884 no, four blank ballots. That represented a 23% voter turnout rate. The debt exclusion vote failed. Before we get to a discussion of what comes next, I want to take a minute. I know Dr. Baita's passed on some thanks, but I want to take a minute for some acknowledgements. I want to thank you, all the voters. It was exciting to hear about all the new residents who voted in the Stoughton election for their first time, and all of the people who voted for the first time in an election. There was a lot of students. I think some of you had students that voted for the first time. So that was exciting to have them participate in the democratic process. I want to thank the select board, town manager, and his office, and the town clerk's office for enabling the election to happen. Thank you to all of the committees that listened to our presentation, Finance Committee, Intergovernmental Relations, Municipal Operations, Town Meeting. Thank you to the MSBA for the process, the project team, Tim Bonvati, Chin Lin, Eric Rubin, Dom Tibieri of Vertex, and all of their support teams, Carl Franceschi, Courtney Southwick, and the rest of the DRA team, the Building Committee, TJ Recubro, Joseph Buckley, Fran Burdenetti on behalf of Mr. Coulter, Steve Cavey, Dr. Baita, Ms. Perkins, Kathleen Monahan, Jake Dorr, Jeffrey Pickett, Diana Dolan, Ian Spring, Joyce Fusini, Sandra Gropi, Melissa Lynch, and all the other former members of the PAC, led by Laurie Jacques, and the South School PTO, led by Alison Reddington, the administration, and you guys for all of the extra meetings that you've sat through, all the long presentations. I also want to give a special thanks to Sandra Gropi and Katie Pinionokian, who are former school community members who continue to serve on committees to support this project, as well as other former school community members like Fabian Francois-Smaureset, who also sat through extra meetings. And a special acknowledgement to all the families, family members, coworkers, friends, and caregivers who helped us make all those late-night meetings. They don't often get thanked, but without them, without them providing the childcare and for the past week's memorial support, we wouldn't be able to do this. So thank you for that. What's next? We have 10 days to respond to the MSBA. The deadline is Friday, June 21st. The Building Committee is meeting virtually this Thursday, June 20th, at 6:00 PM to decide. This is a joint school committee, building committee meeting. Depending upon the decision made at this meeting, we, the school committee, may have to revisit our facility's master plan. We have to begin redistricting either way, but it certainly affects how we're going to consider the redistricting. And we may have to readjust our priorities for the FY '26 budget planning process and FY '27, looking forward to that. Are we looking at modulators? What are we looking at? So we have two options that we need to decide on before the deadline for the MSBA. And the one is a revote. We would present the project again. We are... The project team is currently looking at reassessing the project. We can't do any real substantial changes to the education part of this, the classroom space, anything that the MSBA is going to reimburse, A, because that just would compromise the integrity of the project, but also that would affect the grant. The MSBA would require us to go back before them if we were to change this substantially, anything that really affects the education plan, that sort of thing. But the design team is looking at things like the, doing a design bid build rather than a construction manager at risk. So how the project is going to be managed. The construction manager at risk was used with the high school very successfully. We thought that it helped the project come in on time and under budget, but it does come at a little bit of a premium. We are also considering things like eliminating the secondary entrance or exit onto Haynes Road. That was that emergency exit. It was quite extensive. It did involve building a bridge. Eliminating that would reduce the cost. We are, you know, there would still be some emergency access. That Phano Drive is a cleared railroad bed. It is accessible by four-wheel drive, so if needed, police and fire could use that. So there would be a second emergency access. It just wouldn't be the paved road that we were hoping to have. We could do things like switching to less expensive materials. There would be a longer-term cost associated with that because they would be perhaps less durable. We might have to give up the geothermal heating elements and use standard, you know, send more standard equipment for that. So they expect that they could bring down the cost about 10%, maybe five or six million off the cost. But we would have to sort of demonstrate to the MSBA, if we asked for a revote, that the overall cost, if we reduced it just a little bit, would be enough to guarantee a successful revote. So that is something that we are going to be talking about on Thursday. For a revote, we would target an election that's already planned rather than having a new special one. The best one would probably be the state primaries in September, not only because that would allow us to have that, we wouldn't get lost in the presidential election noise, and this would allow us to not be too far behind our original timeline and potentially still target a September 2027 open date for that school building. I do want to note that if we were to decide that we wanted to only do, replace the South School, if we wanted to choose the 225 enrollment over the original enrollment, the consolidated enrollment that we wanted to, that we are presenting with this project, that would not be supported by the MSBA and the revote. So that would not be part of that. The building team is supposedly looking at polling voters and, you know, asking if this is something they would be willing to reconsider, why did they vote the way they did? So that's supposedly in progress. The other option is to remove herself from the MSBA consideration, this round of MSBA consideration. And that means the $47 million grant goes goodbye. Any other school project would require a debt exclusion exclusively. There would be no additional funding available. The only other option would be to do what the fire station is doing and split and have some of it covered under operational cost, but the rest would still be a debt exclusion. Things to keep in mind with that, we cannot submit the same project to the MSBA. This would have, we would have to go through the whole process again. We would go back to the back of the line. We would submit a new statement of interest. We would complete a new feasibility study. The MSBA is unlikely to reimburse the feasibility study the next time around. So the town would have the bill for that. Of the towns whose projects failed to pass the initial vote, and the MSBA selected them again, they ended up spending more. They had to do different projects, different scopes of projects. So it's unlikely that we would have this situation. It might be a completely... It would be a completely... that we would have this situation. It might be a completely, it would be a completely different project. And it would, it would be unlikely to have the amount of reimbursement that we are anticipating with this. We would go to the back of the queue. The MSBA does not allow deferring. I heard multiple people say, well, can you just wait a few years? Can you just tell them to wait? Put a pause on it for three years, four years? That's not a possibility. It's either now or all the way at the back of the line. The towns that have successfully resubmitted and been selected, it's a minimum of seven to eight years. So that's something to keep in mind of this. Keep in mind that the South School, we've been submitting a statement of interest for that school since 2010. So it's taken until this point to be selected and to get into this bar. And there's no guarantee that they would select this project again. And however we present it, some towns have not been successful in reapplying to the MSBA. There is a little bit of politics at play as well. The MSBA has supported this project very wholeheartedly. They've said time and again, this is the sort of projects that they are looking to sponsor. They're looking to the consolidation, the thought put into it. They've also appreciated student support for the high school. There was about a seventy percent voter, voter approval of that project. This project sets us back on the, on the middle school. We have to go to the MSBA for the middle school. That is going to be at least, I think we, at our master facilities, we projected that at a hundred and thirty million, but Canton's middle school project was ahead of us at the last MSBA meeting, and that was a two hundred and eighty million dollar project. And to think of doing that without MSBA support and grants, I don't know how you could do something like that. So, you know, that is a real thing to consider. You know, so pretty much the only options we have forward. I mean, there are things, if we were to decide MSBA is not the way to go, we have to do a debt exclusion only through the town. You know, we could talk again about replacing only the South School or renovating only the South School. That is going to be kind of difficult to do. Another thing that we tossed around is our facility's master plan, our long-term plan after consolidating the Wilkins and the South, and then revisiting the middle school, was to say, okay, let's add on, do an addition renovation to the Dar Gibbons, and then think about taking care of the Hanson School with that. Maybe we jump right ahead to that. And we just add on a block of classrooms onto the Dar, the Gibbons. Again, that is not going to be an MSBA project. They are not going to support something like that. You know, because basically we're saying, we're just going to put a block of classrooms. They don't like this form follows function. They want a form follows function. They don't just want to say, you're just going to put a box onto a school. The problem with these potential projects, the South only, or adding an addition to the Dar Gibbons, is they don't address some other issues, which is the Wilkins. The Wilkins is our next elementary school to be replaced. Yes, we've done the roof. We've done the windows. We're looking at doing the HVAC system. Issue with the Wilkins is the size of the facilities. The classrooms are undersized for elementary school these days. The cafeterium's undersized. There's no space for full schools assemblies. So that is an issue. It also doesn't address this building, the Daw, or the Jones, excuse me. The Jones, as an administrative and preschool, is not eligible for MSBA funds. So this will never be eligible. Anything that we choose to do with this is going to be, have to go before the town. And we're going to have to ask the town for money to redo the school. Eventually, we would like to take the school out of rotation and return this property back to the town. This building is almost a hundred years old. There's really not much else that we can really do to help it limp along. So, you know, those are real serious issues to kind of, to consider. So, in a nutshell, this is what my understanding of where we are. Dr. Baita, I don't know if you want to add anything else to this?
Madam Chair, you are very thorough and factual. So thank you.
Yes. Any questions or comments for the committee?
Let's go for a second. No, go ahead. Yes, Madam Chair, just point of clarification. I just want to make sure I heard you correctly that any work that we do on the schools at this point would require a town vote.
Yes.
And not necessarily any investment of money from the state.
Correct.
All right. Even if we talked about just simply renovating the South or the Wilkins, we'd be talking about going to a town vote to finance it.
That's correct. Unless we go through the full MSBA process again. The issue we have, the MSBA does have grants for things, repairing windows and roofs and things like that. The issue with the South School is that because that building is not compliant with ADA regulations, that any renovation over thirty percent of its value, it's valued at three point nine million dollars, triggers a full renovation in order to make it ADA compliant. The size of that building, the size of the hallways, the size of the classrooms, once we start adding in, widening the hallways, adding in the proper slope of ramps, we're going to have to add on to that. Once we start opening up the walls, due to the age of that building, we're looking at asbestos, looking at lead paint. That building has water issues, potential mold. Start like opening up the window, the walls, you're also looking at people saying, electrical's not up to code. Suddenly, we've got to do electrical. Suddenly, we have to do fire safety. And what should be, you know, a one and a half million dollar project becomes a thirty million dollar project. So that's the real issue with just renovating the South or even applying. And that's the reason the MSBA won't accept the South School for repairs for the roof and other projects.
And renovating will not address the space issues at the South.
And that's the other issue, is that the South is currently too small.
Thank you for clarifying that.
I think it's, it's really important to, to your comment, Madam Chairwoman. There's a real lack of understanding that a, any type of work that's done to that building kicks in federal law around ADA compliance. So, like you said, once you hit a thirty percent threshold of the value, which I believe is approximately one point one seven million dollars, I don't think there's anything down there at the South that we could say is long-term sustainable at one point one million. In talking to Ms. Fusani, our outgoing director of facilities, the cost of that roof is probably one of the most expensive in town, just because of the way it's laid out. And I never mind the walls. And as somebody who's done renovation additions, you're also talking about the millions of dollars going out the door because you have to put people somewhere. So you're looking at modulators for a period of time, which is literally just money going to a third party. It's not investing the money anywhere. The, the last part is, this is subject to the Building Committee moving, deciding to move forward, Part A. And Part B, the MSBA filing the letter within the ten days, which means they have to get it by Friday. And B, them allowing the extension beyond the one hundred and twenty days from the day that the board voted to fund the project by approximately another thirty days to get to the state primary on Tuesday, whatever that first Tuesday is, September fifth, I think it is, or third or something. So there's a two process, two-step process that the MSBS, MSBA has to say yes to. And then there's, what, you know, starting Friday morning, if the move is to, to move in this direction, then you have all the politics that's just happened will restart in some way, shape, or form. One of the things that's really interesting, interesting to me, I cannot speak tonight, is, probably I should speak last, right? Is, is the idea of next steps. If in fact, the Building Committee says, you know what, we're going to go back and say, no, we're going after a different statement of interest. I don't think that's the direction they're going in, but the fact of the matter is, it's the will of that committee as a, as a whole. The second, and the reason why you're there is because you are the policymakers of the district. So you, you do have the opportunity to speak your voice as an individual or collective body. That's why we thought it was important that you be there. And then the, the third part is, I want to be very, very careful about the facts of not scaring our families and my staff, our staff. The, the building is open. The building is working. The building has its, its life safety protocols in place. It's not what I would consider for Twenty-First Century Learning in today's world, the way to do business. And the, the potential cost of going out for a non MSBA funded, let's say it's a forty million dollar project, and that becomes a number that no voters are okay with. I cannot see how you split that into more operational money. As I said publicly before to you and at the Building Committee, I, I spent a lot of time as a voter thinking about how to vote on the fire station. I voted yes. I'm very proud of that vote. But the idea that the long-term plan is to take operational funding out while at the same time not using free cash, while at the same time having to do OPEB, which is starting to hit us in the face, that puts a lot of pressure on department, department budgets. Long-term, not tomorrow, not tomorrow, but long-term, you see, you see that six hundred thousand dollar line item, four hundred thousand, million line item catch-up, which is, I think, what we're going to see with the, with the fire station in the, in the near future. And again, the voters have spoken. It was the way it was presented. I asked at the Building Committee meeting for TJ Recupero to seek information from Mr. Coulter on, you know, what would that split look like? Again, because it's important to gather the information for the, for the committee to do its will. But at the end of the day, as I've said publicly now a number of times, I don't think there is a number that's going to do anything currently. The only number is going to be, are there seventy-five percent of the people that stayed home think that this new number is a better number? I think the numbers are going to pretty much stay the, the same way. It's a matter of who do the no voters get and who do the yes voters get? And you have to play catch-up by six hundred. You're starting out with six hundred in the hole. That's, that's a tough battle for, for those of us who support the building. So the, the issue for the committee, this committee, the school committee, as a policymaker and, and funding responsibility is going to be, regardless of what that happens, this committee throughout this summer is, already has authorized me that I have to begin the process of collecting information on what does happen if in fact this vote goes forward and is not successful again, or if it is. We have to put together a redistricting committee. And as somebody who's done this, it is not an easy thing to do. Because now you're also talking about redistricting and saying somebody's in a newer building going to an old building. So instead of the argument being the other way, who gets to go to the new building? Now it's who gets to leave the younger building to go to the older building. And those are not good discussions either. So.
Any other comments or questions? Did you have one?
Just to general, I just want to reiterate what you had shared about just the gratitude for all the folks who were involved with this. Particularly, the Building Committee has done a lot of work to present the best option. I really appreciate the information about what we're looking at right now. I'm looking forward to learning more about it on Thursday. But just like, I don't know, a lot of work has gone into this up to this point, and it's going to continue to be a lot of work. And just very grateful to have a strong team on it, yourself included. I know you were doing the thinking, but like, as somebody who's been involved with that pretty closely, just want to shine that back to you, too.
Thank you. I was really hoping to go on summer vacation this year instead of thinking about a building project, but apparently I've got to do some more thinking about it.
Or pay for a babysitter.
Yeah, pay for a babysitter, yeah.
And stay elected and pay for a babysitter.
Mr. President, do you have any comments?
I always think of where are we now? We are at a point where we still have a problem. And we thought we had a solution. And we find ourselves without a solution. And how do we go forward, of course, is what we're talking about. I see it as we need to represent the current solution. And in the meantime, get solid numbers, budget numbers for what it would cost if the, if the, we go forward and the vote fails again. And in the process, I know it's a short time. If we're able to get bids or contracts to do the ADA compliance and so on, and, and go through that entire process, and we can present line item numbers, this is what's going to cost for the windows. It's going to cost the roof. It's going to cost electricity. It's going to cost our necessary widening the hallways and so on, and see where we end up. Are we still deficient? We have to educate the community, the kids in the community. We have no choice. So one way or another, everyone will end up paying. What always comes to my mind is, have we just been penny wise and dollar foolish? Because so far, the data indicates that it's going to cost us substantially more down the line. And one way or another, we have to, we have to pay for it. And we have to educate the children. We have to do it in a safe environment. And I do know that, Dr. Baita, you assured me several times, many times, that the South School is safe for the staff and the children now. But when we get to a point when we have, potentially having contractors working on windows and everything, and they're dragging their tools on the floor and everything else, there's always a potential of getting asbestos into the air. So one of the things we have to do, in my opinion, is take a look at the building and say, we have to remove the hazards. And is it possible to move it as quickly as possible? Because I, I, I don't feel that we're going to have contractors going there, yeah, it's asbestos. I'm going to get my crew in here and, and pull the, pull the carts with the tools and drop the hammers and, and the pliers and the wrench onto the floor and get asbestos into the air. I think we're going to have problems with, with hiring contractors that will readily go in there with asbestos. So I think one of the things we should look at first is determine how to remove that. What's the cost of removing it? Before we can even think about hiring or putting things out for bid for, for contractors to come in and give us additional estimate. I just, I just don't see any contractors saying, you got asbestos? That's okay. We'll go in and start working on windows. And of course, parents, I know myself, I would certainly not feel comfortable with doing that. So let's look at the hazards. If there's mold in it, same problem. You go to renovate someplace and you open up a wall and you find you have mold. Now it's in the air. We have to, you know, drill test holes in walls and ceilings and everything else just to see what's under there. I know you have musha detecting machinery which you can put against the wall, and it tells you how much moisture is in the wall and give you a good idea if it's mold in there. But I just, I just don't see companies going in there and saying, oh, yeah, we'll, we'll bid for this without whatever premium they're going to charge because they're working in the, in an area where the hazards. And I used to work at Digital Corporation when they discovered asbestos in the floor. The entire company had two weeks off at mained facility because it was just unsafe. And of course, I've had a, my brother's father-in-law lost his life to asbestos. So that's something...
Close.
Yeah. Yeah. And it's just bothers me that it's there. And, and I know it's encapsulated now, but I, I just, I can just see a plumber dropping a wrench or something like that, or even a screwdriver and just getting some of those fibers into the air. So, I mean, I would recommend to the Building Committee to, if, to start looking at, how do we remove this asbestos? How much is that going to cost us? Let's, we'll start taking the, the, the dollars that's going to cost substantially more in the future because we're not doing the building, and see how much it would cost us now. And I think if we can get those numbers on paper. I was a little bit disappointed. I, I think the Building Committee did a fantastic job otherwise, and really appreciate their work. As you're aware, at the beginning of the process, I really grilled them a little bit. But they came together at the end, and I was thoroughly impressed at the job they did. But perhaps, one area I was disappointed, and it was pointed out, that we really didn't have line item, this is how much it's going to cost us. I think that would have made, could have probably made a big difference in the vote.
Right. I think, I think to address that, the feasibility study, the goal was to find the best solution. And there was an initial price out. It wasn't as detailed because it was chosen not to pursue that option. But I think, and, and getting that quote together takes time. It takes money. But that is something to explore. Like, is there a way for us to, to effectively get that quote? Because as you said, we still haven't, we solve a problem. We have a problem with the South School. That doesn't go away with this vote. That is still an issue we need to address, and we need to address it now. The school has been identified as being up for replacement since 2000. I think that's almost worked to our detriment. The fact that it's gone twenty-four years before we've gotten to the point where we're almost able to replace it. to replace it. People don't understand, yes, there is some urgency because of the ADA compliance, because of all these other issues that have come up. The building's overcrowded, the classroom's too small, the facilities are too small. The problem that the feasibility study was also trying to address was the whole district. We're trying to look at what's best for the town. Time and again, we heard, well, just, let's just keep the neighborhood schools, but replacing five neighborhood schools, plus this Jones School, plus the middle school, that's financially irresponsible for this town. And we're looking at saying, not only are we looking to save money by consolidating, the cost of the consolidated school is about one and a half times, it was about one and a half times the cost of doing two schools backed together. And, you know, then doing the middle school, and then potentially consolidating in the future down to three schools. Not only is that save money for us down the line within the next few decades, but 50 to 75 years in the future, when the town is looking at replacing, renovating these schools again, that's going to save them money, because they will not have to address all of that school stock. So that was part of the feasibility study, was addressing this full issue. But because of that, I think we did lose sight of, you know, some of the specific costs for the South that would have made that argument much more effective to see what it would have been, and so that's certainly something we can bring up for tomorrow, I mean, for Thursday.
Yeah, I see this committee try to save the town money, but let's not go down this rabbit hole, because we know this is a bad option.
Right.
Now, we have to spend that money and go down that rabbit hole and explore that potentially bad option, to see if it's truly horrible, and then come out.
Yes.
Two points of clarification, Madam Chair. You just spoke about the cost of the consolidation being 1.5% of the cost of two schools?
Sorry, one and a half times. So let's say, one school is one, the cost, you know, I think we said about 60 million for ones, or to replace that.
You mean to renovate or to replace?
To replace those schools.
Okay.
So, replacing two schools together is about, was more than that. I think it was, yeah, whatever it was, the cost. But because of the, when you consolidate, you're building only one gem, only one art classroom, only one cafeteria. So you don't have those additional costs on there. And that's one of the issues of replacing all of these individual neighborhood schools back to back to back, is not only do you have to replace five buildings, but you're kind, there's redundancy with rebuilding five sets of gems, five sets of art classrooms.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, it's actually a 25% decrease in the cost?
Pretty much, that was kind of just a ballpark figure, yes.
Or 50% decrease in the cost of consolidating
Right.
two schools into one building because of efficiencies of scale?
Exactly.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Sorry, yes, thank you for clarifying that, because that was not clear.
For any of you math majors out there. And the second, can you provide the details on that Thursday meeting?
So the Thursday meeting is, it is a virtual meeting. I don't have the link on me. It is posted on the agenda, so you should have a copy of the agenda, if not sent to you yet. I will make sure that a copy of the agenda is sent to you. And it is publicly available, it's posted through Town Hall. That is at 6:00 PM on this Thursday, virtual meeting, open to the public, certainly open to the school committee, I would like to, if you are able to see that. So it is virtual, only there won't be anybody here. But it will be on SMAC as well, it will be recorded. I think they're broadcasting live.
That's the intent, that's correct.
Yes, so, but if not, there's, it will be recorded for future broadcasting. So I, if there's nothing else, I'd like to move on, finish up the last of the meeting. Other matters, financial warrants, I'm going to table for now, I need to consolidate all of them and enter them into the record. But I would like to, at this time, ask for any amendments to, for the May 28, 2024 regular meeting minutes.
I have a really minor edit on the first page, under also in attendance. Just wanted to correct the spelling of Katrina Crowley.
Oh, yes.
It's O-C-R-O-W rather than A.
Good catch.
I think it's spelled correctly, like later in the minutes, it was just that one time.
Were there any others? Oh, I had one on page four, with the, it says the, the third line down, it should say the grant instead of the state budget, so the grant of $48 million. Just some clarification. Does anybody have any other corrections, amendment suggestions? All right, can I have a motion to approve the May 28, 2024 minutes as amended?
So moved.
All right, that was made by Ms. Kretler, second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Reposa, motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, the motion is carried, 5-0. Correspondents, we have some civics projects, I kind of want to put a pin on them, because I want to look at them a little bit more closely. We only got a couple. I know that, Dr. Veda, you've got a lot more, so, love hearing from the students, always great to see the projects, a lot of good thought put into it. I love their reasoning and their suggestion, they do some great research. Fortunately, we can't enact everything, but it's great to see the thought, the process, and certainly allows us to sort of think outside the box, and kind of think of some other things. Just this evening, we got an invitation to march in the July 4th parade. Mr. Reposa and I did it last year, and your families are invited to march with them with us as well. So just respond to Mr. Cachon for that, to RSVP. We marched with the other officials. It is quite a long parade, it's not, I did not know last year that it's a little bit longer than the holiday parade. So wear good walking shoes, patriotic wear is encouraged. So if you are going to join us, I'm going to see if I'm going to be able to do that again this year, so that was fun. Are you doing it? Yeah, your family is fantastic, yeah.
It was great, I loved it.
Yeah, it was so much fun, and it's great to go through town. Any other correspondence matters? Yes, Dr. Veda?
I'll defer.
No, no.
Sorry.
Sorry, I thought you were going to. I just want to announce the celebration of Juneteenth tomorrow as a holiday, and hopefully we're all remembering as part of, really, the end of slavery, if you will, in the United States. And then we do have a pretty well-organized and publicized event at Stoughton High School, beginning at 10:00 AM. And I plan to swing by at some point tomorrow. And the second is, I do ask that the committee consider a meeting for the 30th of July. It's a Tuesday, if I remember correctly. The only other time we would need a meeting would be the potential for the articles and stuff, and that could be just a one item thing, and we'll get an update and anything else that comes up.
And we could do that meeting virtually, if that makes it more accessible to people, just to catch people from, I know that's a tough time for travel and all sorts of things. I am here because my student's participating in the drama program, which we discussed a few meetings ago, so.
It may be best that you consider the meeting virtually, just for the sake of everybody's travel and so on and so forth, but it's truly up to, we'll know closer. I just want to see if we can just solidify the date.
Any other questions, comments, additional? Yes.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair, to the superintendent. Do you have, do you know where people watching this can get additional information on the Juneteenth celebration at the high school? Perhaps the schedule, it runs from 10 until what time?
Yeah, so I believe it's 10 to 2 that it's scheduled for. It is noted on the Town Hall website, has been there for, I think, quite a while, if I remember correctly, because I, that's where I've gotten it. We sent out a communication as well through our social media platform, I believe it was last week, that we did that and the week before. So those are the two places that I know for a fact it's been communicated with. There's music, I should say entertainment, followed by, there's also some breakout sessions that are taking place. One is not available really to me, I'm not a first-time home buyer, but I really think that pushing that, especially in a community like Stoughton, is huge. And then there are vendors there that'll be out in the cafeteria area, and there, all kinds of vendors. I mean, the last time, when I went to the library last year, it was like, you know, all kinds of vendors, you get the hats, to the dresses, to the jewelry, to books, to, you name it, so, I'll defer.
And there will be children's activities. I somehow have been drafted into, which is helping with those, so, yes, because, of course.
Yeah, last year's, I remember last year's event was very well organized and very well attended. I believe it was standing room only at one point for the keynote speaker, so if you're looking for a way to reflect and acknowledge tomorrow, the going to the high school would be a really great way to do it.
And it's free of charge?
Yep.
Free of charge. Thank you for that.
All right. If there's nothing else, our next regular meeting is potentially July 30th, that Tuesday virtual meeting we're talking about. Otherwise, can I have a motion to adjourn?
And go into executive session.
And go into, return to executive session, yes.
So moved.
All right, that was made by Ms. Shannon, a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Kretler. Vote?
Aye.
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 All right, that's carried, 5-0. This meeting concludes at 9:45 PM. Congratulations again to all graduates, best wishes for a happy and healthy summer to all students, staff, and families. Thank you all for coming, and good night.